Good evening and welcome to the April 20, 2023 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. I'm Lee Cross, Chair of the Board. I'd like to invite everyone first to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening once again. Called the meeting to order, roll call yields, I believe that we are all present. Trustee Hamel is appearing by Zoom. Good evening to everyone, if I haven't had a chance to say that. And thus begins our annual budget workshop that I think I will turn it over to Dr. Bound for.
All right, and I think I'm actually going to turn it over straight over to Rachel and Janelle.
Yes, I'm going to turn it on.
All right, so it's going to go straight to, we are passing the buck.
We are passing the buck.
So, Janelle Vogler, our Vice President and Chief Financial Officer.
It wasn't on the prompter. Janelle, I'm sorry to not directly introduce you.
Perfectly fine.
They don't write it, I don't say it.
Well, thank you. I'm thrilled to be here, truly. So, as Dr. Bound said, I'm newly minted Vice President and CFO for about the last two months. So, with that, we'll get started. Today, we're going to go over the budget process and the proposed fiscal '24 budget. Every year, we do this in advance at the May Board of Trustees meeting, at which we bring you the recommendation to adopt the budget for the following fiscal year. So, just kind of to give you a preview, what we're going to do, we're going to go through the book. You should all have one of the books. For our viewing audience, this book is available on our website and has a lot of really good information about our proposed budget. This is a good time for me to stop and thank a couple people. Chandra Russell, who is in the audience, who is our Budget Director, and Becky Klinkenborg, who I believe is watching us on our streaming video, who is our Budget Analyst, put a lot of time, attention, and work into creating all this great material for us. And then all throughout the year, they monitor our budget, keep us on track, and make sure we're all going in the right direction. So, start with that. Okay, flip through here. Okay, so if I could start on page one, you'll see a copy of our vision, mission, and values. And then the next page contains our 21 to 25 strategic plan and goals. So, bring this to your attention, because throughout the presentation today, we'll be talking about how all the decisions that we make in developing the budget support the college and achieving those goals throughout the year. So, next, we have our preliminary budget guidelines, and these were presented to you back in the fall. This is where we started in our budget development process. We assumed at that point, a 5% assessed valuation increase, and credit hour enrollment being flat, and then no change in our mill levy at that point. So, then, in March, we, sorry, I keep flipping too far, we learned some more information from the county, and now we're presenting to you our updated guidelines. We've learned since that point that the assessed valuation is actually 11%. Around 11% is what we are using to estimate our budget. Because of that, and we'll go into that a little deeper a couple of slides from now, we are recommending a half-mill reduction from 8.6 to 8.1 mills. This does exceed the revenue-neutral rate, and therefore, we'll be having to make those public announcements and the hearings that we do in the fall. And we do have more information on that mill levy coming up in just a bit. Another change in the updated budget guidelines, we are increasing our assumption on credit hour headcount enrollment by 1%. And that's based on our actual performance in the year that we're in, in fiscal year '23. Okay. The next page, page eight, takes you through our budget cycle calendar. You know, every year, we talk about this. It's really a full year-round process. About the time we finish up with the budget year that we're in, we're about ready to start for the following year. So, we have been following this throughout the year. When we get to a presentation at the end, we'll talk about the final steps in approving this budget. So, with that, we'll move into the first part of our budget discussion, and that is our revenues. So, this is a really handy table that shows you what percentage of our revenue comes from the different components. The biggest section, the blue, is our property tax revenue. That is about 68% of our budget, at $121 million. Following that are tuition and fees, in the lighter blue, and then state aid in the green. And then there's a small chunk there, a little wedge, other income, that's various types of income that come into the college. As we move on to the next page, it's the same information. It just shows it over time, so the last 10 years. And you can see that our state aid, in the yellow, has been fairly a steady proportion of our revenue over that time. Tuition has gone down a little bit, and the property tax has gone up a little bit in relation, and that correlates with our changes in enrollment over the last several years. And I should have said this earlier, but feel free to stop me if you have a question on any of these slides as we're going through.
Do you have a quick question, Mr. Chair? On the property tax, the dark blue, that includes the capital outlay tax. That's all add-to-the-lawrence taxes?
Yes. No, this is.
Page 12 is general fund only.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is that what you were asking? Yeah.
Wasn't what I was asking. I didn't know how to ask it. You fixed me. Thank you.
Good question, thank you. Okay, so the next page, page 14, has a history of our mill levy that we've assessed over the past, gosh, a lot of years, 23 years. So, this year, as we discussed a little earlier, based on that 11% change in assessed valuation, we are recommending a half-mill reduction, which takes us to eight, a little over 8.1. As you can see, we've reduced our mill levy five of the last six years. If you look down at the bottom of the page, you'll see the blue lines show our assessed valuation going up. In most of those years where we had those higher assessed valuations, we were able to lower the mill levy during that time. The valuation is just shy of $15 billion this year, which is quite large. Yeah, so we're recommending 8.116.
If I may, the tax delinquency rate, I think we were using a 2% rate. Is that right?
I believe so, yes, yes.
Is that the actual rate, or is it an assumption?
It's fairly close to actual. The actual that we've experienced, it trickled up a little bit during the pandemic. It's been around 1%.
In Johnson?
Yes.
What is it in other counties?
Don't know.
Okay.
Don't have that information.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. So, the next page, on page 15, let me start out. Nancy, thank you for your question on this page that you brought forward to me, I think, yesterday or today. It is a little confusing, because the years across the top look like they're a year behind. So, we are talking about last year, the year that we're in, fiscal year '23, but the tax year is actually tax year '22. So, the right-hand column is the fiscal year '22, '23 that we're in. So, what this table is showing us, we know what our, it shows our average residential value in Johnson County, $384,000. Our portion of that tax, based on that, in the current year that we're in, is $381. And then down below that, we're showing four, this fictional residence at College in Quavera, the other taxing authorities that that home would be subject to. So, you can see ours, the Kansas Porter Region, City of Olathe, I'm sorry, Olathe School District, and the City of Evelyn Park, and then Johnson County Parks and Rec. So, that house would have 114 mills. Our portion of that is 8.6. And then down at the very bottom, just for your information, are a couple of the other school districts and cities in the area, for comparison. So, the next page is looking forward. So, based on that information, the far-right column is the budget that we're discussing today, and that average residential value this year has gone up to $432,000. And our portion of those taxes, based on that 8.1 mill, would be $403. So, that's a $22 increase from the current year, which equals about $1.80 a month that an average taxpayer would be paying. Okay. So, on the next page, page 17, we're going to take a look at our total tax revenue over time. And you can see our mill levy has gone down during those last few years, like five out of those last six. And the majority of the growth that we've had in our tax revenue has been because of appraised value growth, assessed value growth. So, that's the last slide that we have about taxes. If there's any questions on that, or I'll move on to a little discussion on our enrollment and our tuition revenue.
Any questions for Janelle? Seeing none, thank you, Janelle.
Absolutely. Okay, so now, we're going to talk a little bit about enrollment. And as I mentioned earlier, we are estimating a 1% increase in headcount for next year, and that's based on what we've experienced in the current year, year over year. And if you look at the bottom, you'll see our percent change in enrollment for the last five years compared to our National Public Community Colleges, Kansas Community Colleges, Missouri, and some of our neighboring colleges. And while it's continued to be down, it we fared better than our peers. So, that's, I think, a good kind of message for us. So, that additional 1% in headcount that we're projecting nets us about $300,000 in revenue. And we'll talk a little more about that on a slide later, about our total tuition revenue projections. Okay, so the next slide is a little look at where our students come from, what their residency is. And the top there is our students by number, by headcount, and at the bottom, it's by dollar amount, by tuition dollars. So, the biggest chunk, of course, is our Johnson County residents, at 70% by enrollment. They make up about 62% of our tuition revenue, which makes sense, because their tuition is, of course, lower than our out-of-district and out-of-state students. The other sections you'll see there, the green is our Kansas residents, and the kind of darker blue is our metro-rate students. Then the next, I think it's four slides, are four different rate categories. So, this first one is our residents. We don't, we are not recommending, and we did not approve a tuition increase. So, these are flat from last year across all four categories. So, we're at $97 an hour for Johnson County resident, and that includes the $16 of mandatory fees. And we have a list of those in a couple of pages. Same thing here. These are our Kansas residents at 116, out-of-state and international at 228, and then our metro-rate students that are at 143. And again, that's, that's flat from last year. And that takes us to our required student fees. We don't have any changes to those. We've, those have remained flat for several years. So, there's a schedule of those, the student activity, debt reduction, parking roads, sustainability, which totals $16 for each credit hour. In the next page, we have all of the credit-specific, course-specific fees. There's only two changes on this list from last year, and those are down in the nursing section, and those are exam fees that we collect, and then those students can take their clinical exams. Then the next page here is kind of a chart showing what the fees look, the tuition and fees look like for a full-time student. So, for a Johnson County resident, per annual, taking 30 hours a year, that'd be $2,910. We're roughly a third of what KU and K-State charge for those same full-time students, and pretty competitive with Metropolitan Community College down at the bottom there. And then the next three pages are a chart, comes straight from KBOR, and they show all of the Kansas Community Colleges by residency type. So, you can see how we compare for in-state, out-of-state, et cetera. And then summarizing that, and again, stop me if I'm going past something you wanted to ask about. On page 30, we have a chart that shows how we compare for in-district students to all of our Kansas Community College partners, and we are second. So, we're second, with only Coffeyville having a lower tuition rate than us.
I have a question there, because every other year that I remember, we've compared that, and we've been higher than, we've been lower than anybody except Dodge City, because Dodge City had a lot of fees. Now, Dodge City has jumped up, and we have $84 of fees there, but Coffeyville is less than us. It just, it was a curiosity to me, because we've always talked about being comparable to Dodge City. But I guess you got the fees from their website or their people. So, okay. Just, first time I've seen Coffeyville as the low. Right? Does that sound familiar?
That's right to my knowledge.
Agreed.
I think it's smart. Now they can say they're the lowest.
All right, so the next page here is another informational-type slide. These are, this is a list we get from the college board, and it shows Kansas, well, actually, every state, but Kansas Community Colleges. So, this threw me for a minute, because I thought it was our rate. Is this not? This is an average of all community colleges in Kansas. So, we're pretty far down on the list. Looks like we're about seven from the bottom. So, we're pretty affordable compared to many other states, at $3489 for our state. So, that's all the information in the book about our tuition and fees.
Do we have other counties' mill rates, other community colleges' mill rates? Did I miss that?
I don't think we have that in the.
Not in this publication. It's available through other data books. If you're interested in that, we can.
Yes, ma'am, I am. I just would like to see it, and if I can go find it, I can go get it. I just, in years past, I think we've had it. So, I'm not criticizing. I just, I always look at it, and as we're engaged in Topeka and reindeer games, like, I just want the other trustees to be aware of what other schools are charging in their mill districts and what we're charging, and to be sensitive to that, because not all, all of our leaders in this county are sensitive to that. So, I just would like our board to be sensitive to that information, so.
I can include it in my weekly update.
Okay, thank you.
We can find that. Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next, I'll move into a slide that shows our state aid. So, there's a lot of numbers on this slide. But basically, if you look at, we are highlighted there, of course, in the middle, Johnson County, our total funding. This is a total of our tiered tech ed funding and our non-tiered gen ed funding, which totals $24 million. We typically base our budgeting on the prior year, what's actual. So, we did receive an additional, just a little shy, $2.5 million that we were expecting, and we based this year's budget on that number. So, that's how we come up with that number. Any questions on that? Okay. All right, so, the rest of your book is a lot of, you know, detail all the way down into each and every org, expenditure category, that's there for your information. So, if there aren't any more questions on the book, I will move over to a PowerPoint that I've prepared that kind of summarizes where we are on everything and talks about our next steps.
Trustee Hamel has a question?
Yeah, thank you. Turn it lower, there you go. On page 18, it shows we are down 12% from 2016. Can you tell me what the revenue breakdown was for 2016? Like, how much was that came from taxes, or how much came from students?
What page did you reference, Trustee Hamel?
Page 18.
18?
Yeah, page 18. I see the percentage, but I just wanted to get the number for 2016, the actual amount, the dollar amounts.
Right, the percentages are on the table on page 13. So, if you're wanting the equivalent dollar amounts, we can, we could provide that. I'm not prepared to give you that number right now, but we can definitely.
Okay. Looks like approximately $80,000. From the graph, I'm kind of guessing from the graph, it's about $80,000, paired to about $125. Is that right?
What graph are you referencing, Trustee Hamel?
Page 13, the graph on page 13.
Total revenue, that somewhere? Where's that at?
Oh, I see what you're saying. We can get it.
I'm trying to catch up with the question here.
All right. Do we have total revenue for 2016, maybe?
No.
Total revenue, it looks like it was about $135,000, 100, somewhere in that ballpark, Trustee Hamel, on page 13.
Okay, yeah, I was kind of ballparking it, too, and that's all we got, that's all we got. So, I'm noting that we were at $80,000 in 2016, and we're about 121, oh, sorry, 121 million in '24 now. Is that correct, right?
I don't quite follow you.
So, we have about a 50% increase in tax revenue over those, over those years, and we're down approximately, this says 12%, and obviously, we had a bump that's not included in there. But I'm guessing we're probably down about 9% since 2016 in our headcount, and then our revenue is 50% higher from taxes. I just wanted to note that for people, unless I got anything wrong.
Well, I'm not sure I accept your premises there. I think what you want to say is that revenue is up significantly while enrollment's down, correct?
A little more than that. So, if we were $80 million brought in from, from tax revenue in 2016, to now, we're looking at 121. It's about a 50% increase over that period. That's, I just want to note, it's right around 50%. It could be off a little bit, but that looks like, as far as I can see from here, that's what it looks like.
I'd have to find the exact number, but I see, you're saying.
Okay. All right, thank you.
It was around 80 on that year.
Any other question or thing to add there, Trustee Hamel?
No, I just wanted to make note of that.
Okay, and I, my contacts are dry, just so you know, and I have funny looks on my face anyway. So, if you see my face, just blame me. I don't mean anything.
You're good. All right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Any other questions at this point?
Let me get my hand down where it is.
If I may, Janelle, if you could proceed.
You ready for me to move forward?
Yes, please do so.
Great. All right, so now, we're going to go through a few slides that summarize all the information and break down some of the categories for you that are in the detail. Okay, so we'll start with an overview summary of our general fund revenue. As we discussed, the property taxes are based on an assessed valuation growth of 11%, which would generate an incremental tax revenue of around $6 million above what we had originally projected. So, as a result, and based on our needs, we're proposing a mill levy reduction of a half-mill, which is the fifth mill levy reduction in the past six years, and it saves taxpayers approximately $7 million. And we'll see that in the chart in the next page. This mill levy rate is in excess of the revenue-neutral rate, and we'll be providing that notice to the Johnson County taxpayers this fall, as well as holding the required hearing for that. The second category is our tuition fees. Based on our current year performance, we are projecting that 1% increase, which generates approximately $300,000. That's based on our fall-over-fall and spring-over-spring performance this year that we're currently in of 0.3% and then 4.5% growth. So, that's where we came up with that 1%, a conservative estimate there. Last year, fiscal year '23, we did have increases of $3, $4, and $5 in the various tuition categories. This year, we're not bringing, I mean, we're not going to have any increases in our tuition. We also increased the College Now grant, that was $200,000 to $250,000, and that supports access for our Johnson County resident high school students that are enrolled in concurrent classes. And then, as we discussed in one of our meetings, the Management and Finance meeting, we have removed the payment plan fee for our students, which reduces that payment plan fee revenue by about $200,000. So, the net result of all of those changes in our tuition and fee revenue is less than $50,000 when you add those all up.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please do so.
I'm trying to net those out. So, 1% increase in credit hours, according to page 18, would be about 4,720 hours. I'm just looking at the difference between the budget for 2024 and the budget for 2023. Excuse me, it's about 2,720 new credit hours on page 18. Everybody with math skills?
Yeah.
So, and I always just use a blended rate of $100 in credit hours, just because it's easier for my brain. But, so that's $270,000 in new tuition and fees.
Yeah.
But we are adding $50,000 expenditure into College Now, and we're losing $200,000 revenues in the debt, student debt waiver process, right? So, those are effectively net, close.
Yeah.
So, when we get, again, going back to, I talk about enrollment a lot, but enrollment doesn't solve very much of our problem, because our tuition and fees are so low.
Correct. Yep. And that's exactly, and that's between 0 and 50,000 rounded, one way or the other, but a small amount at any rate.
Any other questions for Janelle?
Okay. And then state funding, we've already talked about. It's based on actual amounts that we've received in fiscal year '23, which were a little bit higher than we projected, and that's based on the legislature, and then making an additional appropriation under the community college funding formula in the current year. We brought that number forward as we projected revenues going into fiscal year '24. Okay, so just as a general reminder, and these are approximate, I realize they're not round numbers, but they fluctuate as the actual collections come in. But one mill, one mill, the value of that is about, just shy of $15 million. So, a tenth of that is obviously $1.5 million. So, as we're thinking about mill reductions, that's how that works out. And then 1% change in assessed valuation nets us around $1 million, give or take. So, those are kind of handy numbers to have as you're looking through the rest of the information. Okay, so this is a little bit detailed chart of where we started and how we landed here. So, as you can see my cursor, this first is the adopted budget from fiscal year '23. Then in the fall, this is when we were planning on the flat mill and a 5% increase in assessed valuation. Then it came in at 11%, which raised what we would be collecting. So, then we reduced it by five, half a mill. And so, that is a six, about a $6 million reduction in the general fund assessment, right here. And then, we went to proposed budget, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, half-mill reduction comes in right here. Had we left it at the same mill levies before, we'd be here. So, we would have been bringing in about 128. This takes us down about $7 million to 121 in the general fund with that mill levy reduction. I hope that makes sense. So, basically, this yellow column is a summary of the budget we're proposing right now. I mean, it's a very balanced budget.
This isn't in here.
Could we get a copy of this summary?
Yes, we can.
It's a wonderful summary, and I thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. So, now, we're going to give you a little bit more detail on our general fund expenses that are included in this budget. So, we'll start with salaries and benefits, which, as you recall, is our largest component in our expenditures. We have a compensation increase this year of 2.75%, which is about a cost of about $2.6 million. And then, included, we also have benefit cost increases because of the rise in cost of benefits for medical, our portion, payroll taxes, et cetera. That's around just a little over $2 million. As we discussed back in January at the Management and Finance Committee, we are supplementing the auxiliary fund by amount. So, we, because of the changes in the textbook industry, and as we're adjusting to our customer base post-COVID, we are needing to supplement the auxiliary fund to keep those operations running. I will tell you, though, that 2.5 million expenses is offset by about I will tell you, though, that 2.5 million expenses is offset by about $1 million of revenue that came over with it, so you're only seeing the expense side here, so the net effect is about one and a half million.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Does that mean we're, the general fund is subsidizing the auxiliary fund by a net of 1.5 million?
Yes.
And that's something that we anticipate will be an ongoing subsidy if we want to continue those auxiliary fund activities?
Yes.
Because they're not going to pay for themselves anymore.
Probably not. I will say, though, that there's a lot of work going on, particularly in dining, to, to adjust operations and figure out exactly what services do we want to provide, make sure we're as lean as we possibly can be. So, yes, I anticipate it to be an ongoing expense, I don't anticipate it to go higher and possibly even come lower.
I think at management and finance, we heard this, and trustee Hamel was there, the bookstore used to throw off as much as $1 million a year in revenue?
Yes.
That went to all, all the auxiliary funds, and it is not going to do that?
Right.
Ever again?
Probably not.
So being lean in dining is one thing, but we, we need to know that we're going to have to support auxiliary funds as a service on campus to students, faculty, and staff. So, I, I just consider that an ongoing, that's just got to be built into the base expenses. We're not going to go back to the good old days.
Probably not, and I do want to point out, the big chunk of, the, the big reason that the bookstore's business has changed is the change to online digital books for our students, which is a very good thing for our students, because the cost is quite a bit lower for our students, and we all know how expensive hard copy textbooks can be. So, it, while it does, it is a cost, it also is helpful to our students and their, their needs. Yeah, I think that's an accurate statement.
Yes, sir.
Trustee Musso, and for all of you, the, the practical reality is the, the bookstore model nationally has changed, and we are not at all in a different situation than where other bookstores find themselves, in that the, the revenues that have been generated previously by bookstores, that just doesn't exist anymore. And so it forces us to look at, how do we, how do we deliver the services that we need to in the most cost-effective way, and yet still meet the needs of our students?
And I apologize if I suggested it was Johnson County Community College.
No, but I wanted to make sure that-
... everybody, and we had a great presentation by the bookstore director, so it's just the reality across higher education.
It is the reality.
I didn't take it that way, and I thank you for pointing it out. Any other questions at this point?
Great. Okay, so the next item on the list is the estimate that we have in the budget for our job architecture project, we've talked about that numerous times in here, that sits at about 1.8 million, that's the estimate for that. And then the verb expense of approximately 900,000 has been removed from this budget going forward, because that ends this year at June 30. And then finally, our total budgeted positions remains flat, so there's just a small summary at the bottom there of our total positions over the last five years, and it's remained pretty steady and no change from last year. So next, we'll look at our operating expenses. That includes 370,000 that has been prioritized by our strategic planning groups, and then by cabinet, for strategic initiatives supporting the plan. These are just some examples from each of the different goals. So under the student success goals, we've got some money allocated for the guided pathways program. Community partnerships have a community survey that is part of what they're working on. The diversity, equity, inclusion includes 165,000 estimated need for programming, speakers, things like that in the coming year. And then finally, the employee engagement has 20,000 allocated for various employee engagement activities throughout the coming year. And then finally, an additional $1 million just across the board in all the different areas to support increased costs of various goods and services. Okay, next is our capital expenses. The science lab renovation project that we've been talking about for several years is substantially complete, that's a multi-year effort, and we're looking forward to that opening in the fall. We have about 287,000 in high priority remodel requests, and just as a reminder for this group, we, we receive requests for all the different remodel requests, and those we'll go through, and they're costed out and prioritized, and so we bring forward those that we feel are most important to our needs on campus. And then the $1 million that we allocate for active learning classroom renovations, that's consistent with prior, we've been doing that for many years, about 40 classrooms have been renovated since we started this back in 16, 17. So there's a lot of good work happening there, too.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, somebody else asked a question, I'll pass it down to you. I'm just curious, how many total classrooms do we have that are eligible to go to an active learning classroom, as opposed to a science lab? We've done 40, we do $1 million every year, is it when the sun burns out that we get them all done, or sometime before that?
We will never get them all done. The, the spaces have to meet certain requirements, have to be large enough to meet flexible furniture, a certain amount of students, ADA requirements, so we only would actually have another 35 or so rooms that would be available, but usage dictates whether we will continue the project beyond the next year. And right now, usage is up, so we will probably need to continue this project. However, I, there has never been a time when academics has thought we would actually get to all of the possible classrooms being converted to active learning. That would require everybody changing pedagogy to, to need to use that level of technology, and not all classes require it.
Thank you.
That is an esoteric topic.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
All right, so now we have a summary of the budget that we're presenting. You can see that, if you look at fiscal year '23, we had budgeted, the year that we're in, we had budgeted about a $14 million use of reserves, that was a planned use of reserves to pay for the science lab, the second piece to the science lab renovations. We don't have that in this year's budget, so we're at a balanced position at about a $244,000 surplus, which is pretty close to balanced. So that is the summary of everything we've talked about.
Is this on page 41?
42-ish.
Yeah. 42 has one additional column in it, and that is where we think we might land at the end of this year, and that's just an estimate that we came up with about midway through the year. Those columns do match to page 42. Okay.
Have we covered, um, what happens to our reserves?
Nope, next slide.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thought I missed it, I didn't-
Yep, nope, that's the next slide, I can, I can go back to-
Sorry, it's a segue.
I'm sorry, I have a question on page 42, now that you've directed my attention to it.
Very good.
The actual fiscal year, or the budget for fiscal year '23 assumed we were going to spend $14 million more than we had in revenues, and that 14 would come out of reserves because we're doing the science labs.
Yes.
But now that estimated FY '23 shows it's only 7 million.
And it's actually a little less than that now, so that, that was just midway through the year, where were we, and we estimate certain percentages that we'll spend, so that's not, not then a number that we're going to land on, if that makes sense.
Which one, which one is not a number?
Estimated fiscal year '23.
So we still think the $14 million budgeted amount is what will be at June 30?
No, I think we're going to, we're going to be less than that, less of a negative than that, less of a deficit than that, because we received additional state aid, and we had more enrollment than we planned for.
Okay, I guess I'm trying to figure out what the estimated FY '20, '23 column means then, is that what we think it will be as of June 30th? And it's, it's obviously an estimate?
Yes, it, it was an estimate, and we have had more information even since then.
That seems like pretty good news to me, if it's $7 million better than we budgeted. We ought to be cheering about this or figuring out how to do it again.
Well, and if you look at the chart, I mean, if you look at the salaries and benefits line, we're expecting to be quite a, a significant amount under budget. We've continued to maintain a fairly large number of vacant positions throughout the year, right? We fully fund and budget for all of our positions, so we've had some vacancies, we've had some savings there. We also had budgeted some funds to get started on this compensation plan work that hasn't really started yet, and so we're, we're, we've got some savings here to date from that as well.
So that, the 7 million is not out of the science labs or reserves, because our capital number is the same?
We will spend that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
A lot of this cost savings is in the salary and benefit category, and some of our operating lines are coming in under budget as well.
Thank you.
Dr. Bowden wouldn't let me go to DC in February.
Saved us a million.
So untrue, it's just, it's funny.
Mostly a joke.
Be careful, be careful what you say.
Little bit, little bit. Please proceed, sorry.
No problem.
I forget I've ensured.
All right, so the perfect segue to the next subject is our reserve projection, and these are, this and the next slide are two really important things that we look at when we're developing the budget. Per our policy, we can't go below, our policy requires us to stay above 25% of our budgeted expenses. And that is what the blue bar represents. And, no, I'm sorry, I apologize. A red line.
Where are we?
Where is this?
77.
What? Oh, in the book?
77.
77.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Just cross.
Trying to keep up. 77.
Well, that's good.
So, the message here is, this budget that we're presenting, we're in a pretty healthy reserve level at that 32%, and then going forward, based on our standard budget assumptions, we don't anticipate that to change, that will be in the amount that we need to be in.
Any questions for Janelle? Seeing none.
All right, so the second thing that is a good indicator that we take a look at is the, the CFI, the composite financial indicator. So this is a chart showing our historical numbers, the, the green is the ideal, so-
86?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hold on.
We want to stay above that 3%, so as you can see, we've been in that ideal range for a number of years. 2021, we had a little blip up, and that was mainly due to our cash flow from all the HERF funding that was coming in during that time. Then it went down just a little bit, as we spent down some of our reserves on the science labs. And since the budget we're presenting this year is a balanced budget, we don't anticipate any changes or to come out of that ideal range as we go forward.
So this is like on-base percentage for community college health, right?
On base, yes.
It just tells you everything you need to know, but it's just one parameter.
Yeah.
So we could be at 10 and be ideal, but it's just a matter of whether we deem it politically viable, is that right?
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
I don't know if that-
Above 3 is what we want to maintain, so-
Okay.
I don't know that there's a ceiling on it, other than what is the appropriate amount of, for this particular indicator, other than what we think is the appropriate amount to have in reserves.
And this isn't a single criteria, this is the composite, so this is multiple-
Right.
-indicators of, of health that are brought together. And on the other, the other five, we are in good shape, too, which leads to this one. It's not like we have one low and one really high.
Right.
To be an average.
We, we measure several of them, and I'm trying to remember what- Yeah, and this is just the summary from that detailed presentation that comes to the committee each year and after the audit is done.
So 6.5 is, I guess counting 2021, the third best it's ever been, right?
Since 2013.
I don't know that it's a rating system.
Yeah, we were at 6.9 in 2017, and then we had that high point last year, in 2021, I mean.
Thank you.
Okay, and so that takes us to just what our next steps are, so we, we have this budget workshop today, which we're preparing for. May 3rd, management and finance committee, we bring forward a recommendation to adopt this management budget. Then that comes to the May 11th Ford meeting. This enables the college to conduct business in the new fiscal year. And as we get into the fall, we adopt the legal budget pursuant to the timeline and procedures for public hearing notification to taxpayers. And then we also have those revenue neutral notifications and hearings that we talked about earlier. That is the end of my prepared comments, so we can turn it over for questions, additional questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Janelle here? Madam Trustee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, fantastic first budget workshop presentation, I think the baton has been passed very well, thank you to both of you.
Who used to do it?
There was this lady, she was great, she, oh, wait.
I have good support.
So, thank you for that. The only thing I didn't see that, and I may have overlooked it myself, is if we were to be within the net neutral calculation, what would that mean our budget would have to be?
Revenue neutral?
Yes, revenue neutral.
Absolutely, so our revenue neutral rate would be 7, I'm not sure I'm saying this right. Revenue neutral rate would be 7.716, let me get to the right table.
That's the mil.
Yes, and that, hang on, I have it, I need to get the right information.
Don't you see?
I think if you go back on your slides, it was on slide four. Thank you. You're right, 7.716, thank you. And that would reduce, result in an additional decrease of 6 million, roughly 6 million.
And remind me, if you can, that revenue neutral is from 2019, was it 2019 when that was enacted? Is it that we have to stay neutral to the rate of that year, or does it account for flexibility in, I don't know, state something? I'm, I'm trying to understand what the, what it's comparing us to, because this is what taxpayers will ask us about, because they get these notices, and they want to know why we're taking more of their money. So I need to be able to answer it, so help me, please.
Absolutely, I'm going to answer this and invite Rachel to correct me if I say this incorrectly. So revenue neutral means we would need to be neutral and even to the 122,912 that we collected this current year.
So it's compared year to year?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, it is not compared to a benchmark year, that's what I was trying to figure out, is when, what's the comparison? Okay, so it's compared year to year, and we are taking essentially 6 million more, and would need to lower our mil to 7.716 to be where we were last year?
Yes.
With no new money?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Madam Trustee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This may be in the packet somewhere, and if it is, just direct me to it, but because I've been off of the board for a while, I'd be curious, on page 36 is the chart that shows expense, expenditures, and kind of the percentage of each category of those as part of the whole budget. Do we have that historically, so that I could kind of see since, I mean, going back five years, for example, what those amounts and percentages have looked like?
Yep, it's, if I'm, if I'm understanding your question, it should be right on the next page, on 37. This is if I'm understanding what you're asking, but-
Yes, just not in a circle form.
Should be a historical look backwards at those same-
You've got a more specific question.
Yeah, I, I think, I see the chart on page 37.
Do you want to see actual dollars?
I want to see the dollars and, and all five of the, of the categories there, as opposed to just the four that are on the chart on page 37. It may be a distinction without a difference, but I, I'd just be curious to see what that looks like year over year.
I think we can do that, right?
I don't believe, do we have that page? We don't have it, but I think that's similar to the question trustee Hamel was asking about the revenue, right, as far as what the actual dollars are, and then the year over year change.
Close, correct, yeah. And I suppose the only difference is that on page 37, salary and benefits are lumped together, right?
Right.
And it also, I, I can guess on the dollar amount, but, and if it's, I-
We, we absolutely have the information.
Okay.
It would be not a problem to provide it.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you for that. Anything else, trustee Rea?
No, thank you.
Trustee Musa.
I'm going to start out with, the last page in the book is our Work Comp Fund. And we talked about that, I think it was the Management and Finance Committee, but we have a lower balance than we're used to having, and we've had some higher claims. Is there anything in the budget that's going to, this is just a, a projection for the, for June 30th, 2024, right?
Yes.
And we're assuming that we have 300,000? There's nothing in the budget that adds to that fund from the general fund at this time, right? You'd have to come back to us and say-
There is.
There is, okay.
$300,000 in the general fund-
Okay.
-in FY '24 that is going to be directed over to the Work Comp Reserve Fund.
And at the end of the year, we think we'll have 264 left?
Yes.
Okay, so, we are preparing for what I remember that, it's just that it was a little bit, it was thin and we're going to make it a little thicker?
Correct.
Okay. Janelle, I gave you a heads up on this, and I think it's important for the board and for taxpayers to hear this, but I, I think I, I asked in, earlier in December when we did our budget guidelines, that will budget administrators and do they look for things that we do not need anymore, that are not effective, that can be consolidated, to save money instead of just layering things on year after year? And you gave me some examples, could you share those, some examples of, because I don't think a lot of people believe that a budget administrator actually looks, I know we have a couple hundred around campus that have their budgets, that actually looks for places where we might save some money. So, do they do that, and if so, give me some examples?
Absolutely. So, we do, as you mentioned, have several hundred budget administrators or a couple hundred, and every year, they go through every line, and every line is justified. So, we don't just roll forward an amount, they have to put in a justification for everything in their budget, and it's reviewed by them, by their supervisors, and then it goes through the cabinet for an additional prioritization process. As far as examples, we, we did have several things that we did remove from the budget. Few examples, we had a subscription in institutional effectiveness that was no longer being utilized, so that was about 300,000. We removed that. Couple other, we've, over the all, we've reduced budgets for adjunct faculty over the years, and we more leveraged our full-time faculty positions. And then in this particular year alone, I asked, reduced our computer software and licenses by, to the tune of about 400,000, as we've consolidated and taken really hard looks at what we need, when we need them, et cetera. So, yes, to answer your question, we do that.
The other, the other thing that I asked staff to, to give me numbers on was, the House has passed a constitutional amendment to cap property appraisal increases at 4%. So if that were in place today for fiscal year 2024, that would mean how much of a reduction in revenues for us, because instead of an 11% assessed valuation, it would be 4% plus any new construction.
So if, if we were to have capped at that 4%, our assessed valuation, it would have been a reduction, a 4% cap would have reduced our revenue from about $5 million, so from down to about 110, if that makes sense.
And then to raise that money back, we'd have to increase our mil levy by half a mil?
Half a mil, to 9.1, to, to make it net out, to what we needed, to where we started.
Okay. And the last, last thing I think for a question is, that we're, when, when Mr. Carter comes on for our lobbying report about the budget that it looks like may come out of the legislature that would bring some new money to us, as trustee Smith Everett alluded to, if you have new money that's from the state, that's different and good. We don't know what that is going to be for sure at this point, but it looks like we will get some new money.
Yes, and so, we talked about that a little bit, we don't know yet, and he will give us the report, we don't know how much, what it will be for, and whether it's one-time or recurring funding. Our typical process is we don't adjust the budget while legislature's still in session, but we do take that into account the following year, so that we're not over-budgeting or under-budgeting based on that.
That's all the questions I have.
Trustee Hamel still has his hand up. I didn't miss you, Mark, sorry.
No, no worries, thank you so much. I'm trying to remember back from last year, and maybe Greg usually remembers these things better than most, but I'm trying to remember what the proposed mil cut was for last year, and then what we ended up on.
Four tenths and went down five tenths, if I remember correctly, is that correct?
Yes, four tenths was the recommended reduction, and then it was amended by a tenth of a mil, so we ended up with a half mil reduction.
Okay, thank you. And then, so the next thing is, and I'm not exactly sure how this works, and I'm hoping you could fill me in, I thought we were looking for 6 million, and then with the reduction, we thought we were going to see like a 4 million or something increase. Do you remember what those exact numbers were, or close to it?
Would you ask the question again, please?
Sure. You know, when we were talking about doing the reduction, initially the .4, we're hoping for a certain amount of revenue increase. Do you know what that initial was and what we ended up, when we changed it to .5, we expected to see a different number? Do you remember what those numbers were, or one of those two numbers?
From last year?
Last year's budget?
Yeah.
So what, what did .1 mil represent, I think is what he's asking.
I mean, a tenth of a mil is between a million and then 1.2 million dollars.
Okay, I was thinking it was 1.5 last year, but you're, you're saying, are you pretty sure it was 1 to 1.2?
I'd have to look back exactly, but it's, it's in that ballpark.
Okay. Okay, well, my, my question is, did we get exactly what we thought, or do we see more of an increase or less an increase, or was it exactly what we expected?
Well, we're still collecting taxes in the current year. Are you asking about our actual tax collections?
Yes, yeah, so when we're doing these, we're picking the, you know, the, if we do a .5 this time, I want to know how exact we are, you know, in, in previous ones. When last year, we said we were going to do a .5 cut, did we get the revenue difference we expected to see, or do we see more or less than what we expected from that last conversation or last vote?
I mean, I think we're where we expected to be.
Okay, is there, can it be different, or is it always exact, or?
Well, the final, the final mil levy rate is, is published and established by the county when the abstract is published around the 1st of November, and it was pretty spot-on to where we expected it to be.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to know. All right, thank you.
It could be different.
It could be slightly different due to rounding, slight changes in valuation, but it's very close to where we expected it would be.
Very good.
And that's why I was curious how much difference it was, because for some reason, I thought we were going to do a 4.5 million increase, and it looks like we got a 6 million, and that's why I was kind of, and I'm just trying to remember exactly what it looked like, and I'm not sure, I was hoping somebody would have more information than I have.
I, I have actually the, the mil levy that we were looking at and where it landed in November was 8.7, and it ended up landing at 8.6. So after all of the calculations, the November when the abstract came out, that's when we came to 8.6. But I don't have that converted to dollars. And again, from a revenue perspective, we're still collecting taxes through the rest of the fiscal year, so I'm not sure if that's connected to your question as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Anything else, trustee Hamel?
No, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else here? And I don't know if this is appropriate here, or if I should ask Dick, Mr. Carter, but the dark store theory, I mean, is that anything, is it still alive? I don't remember what the court did or didn't do.
I'll, I'll try to speak to that. The Supreme Court overruled the Court of Appeals. The Court of Appeals, it supported Walmart's valuation process, which was called by some the dark store theory and threatened the tax bases of large retail, retailers. It went back to, they remanded it back to the Board of Tax Appeals, and the cases were settled. So it didn't really give us a final view of what the law might be, but there was a compromise out of it, so that everybody seemed to be equally unhappy. But it didn't have the negative effect that, that people feared, at least as of today.
Actually a common result of litigation, everybody's unhappy. Thank you for that. Any other questions?
Just that I would like the slides that you presented this evening.
I think they've been sent-
They've been sent to you all.
Thank you.
You're not asking us to vote on this now, right? This is just a presentation?
Say that one more time. Vote's next month.
Yes, that's right.
I'd like to make some comments, though, if, if we have time.
But we have time. Yes, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody that put this book together. It's a book we've had every year I've been on the board, I think. And anybody that wants to complain about transparency in government needs to read this book and figure out what it doesn't tell them, that they might need to know about the college's budget. You can disagree with how we're spending the money, or where we're spending it, or where we're getting it from, but you can't claim that you don't know, or that we don't tell you what we're looking at and what we're going to do. And I'm, I'm very proud of that, and I thank staff because you guys do a great job putting this together. And I'm very excited when some constituent calls me and I can take a picture of the book and send it to them and say, is this what you're talking about? It is hidden in my, in my office, stacked with all the other books, but otherwise it's pretty well transparent and, and on the website. So, congratulations for that.
It's on the website, right?
Yeah, it is. It's, it's always been available. And that's what frustrates me so much when people get up and say, you're hiding things, you don't tell us what you're spending, you know, you're just, you're just taking our money and not showing us what you're doing. It's just not true, just as to Johnson County Community College. So, I think it's not true as to any local government in Johnson County, but I want to make that point, and thank staff for making sure that I can show people easily and in an understandable way what we're spending our money on. And I like the fact, this is all good news generally. I mean, I get mad, I got a 15% increase in my appraised value this year. I'm glad I'm in a county where it's a 15% increase and not a 15% decrease. Now, it's not liquid, I can't turn that into cash unless I want to sell my home, and I do it at the right time, but this is generally good news and good news for the budget, for the college. I want to talk about reserves, because there are people out there that think we don't deserve to have reserves in any governmental entity, that it's just a, well, somebody once called it a slush fund. That reserves allowed us to spend 30, 35, 40 million to do science labs without borrowing a dime and paying any interest. So, that's why we have reserves, and we still maintain those reserves at a good level. So, I always feel like I need to mention reserves to tell people that you have a savings account, hopefully, your local government needs a savings account too. And if you look at our trends, our reserves are going to grow over the next, over the five-year projection, so that when the next big capital thing comes, and it will, we will have reserve funds to use it. I mentioned last month, I think, I, I think in December, we seriously need to consider increasing tuition and fees. The percentage of budget that's funded by those is now 15%. It was 21% when I started on the board. We have increased Pell Grant availability, increased student loan availability, we've increased our scholarship funding from the foundation by about double. And so I don't, I still don't believe $97 a credit hour or a small increase in that is what's keeping students from coming here. It won't be a big number, but it will be an important number to show the commitment. I also want to mention that our capital outlay fund is about 7.8 million dollars, and just in full transparency, so everybody understands that, that's property tax dollars that are dedicated only to capital improvement projects. But that is on top of what we get in property tax revenues in the general fund. So, those are, those are property taxes that we're asking Johnson County businesses and citizens to pay. Revenue neutral has this great sound to it, and I think it was adopted, as, as I've said before, more as a symbolic effort than anything else. If we go revenue neutral, then we don't have $2.6 million to pay for promised salary increases. We don't have $1.8 million to pay for the architectural program, the ladder, human resources laddering program that we want to implement. And we could take that money from someplace else, you have to cut something else or take it out of your reserves, but the fact is that the revenue neutral rate doesn't recognize increased costs. A million dollars is just an inflationary cost on goods and services. So, I, I would love to get to a revenue neutral rate, I don't think it's something that's probably possible in any place that has 77% of its budget in people, unless we just decide we're going to get there and we don't care what it does to the people here on campus, which is, I don't think what this board wants to do. My final point is, I, I love the half mil decrease. If, when we get to August or September, when we have our, our budget hearing, if we get another 2 or 3 or 4 million dollars in state aid, that is kind of base aid and that looks like it would go forward for future years, I will be looking to cut the mil levy by that amount. It's about time the state of Kansas stepped up and paid more than 15% of this college and allowed our taxpayers to pay less than, less than 68%. So I don't know what that's going to be, and it may be one-time money that we can't count on, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't reduce our mil levy for one-time money, but if there's multiple-year money or base-year money from the state, then I think we ought to take advantage of that and help our local taxpayers. So that's what I'll be looking for. I don't know if we'll know that number by our May, our May adoption of the management budget, but we'll certainly know it in September. I just want to let everybody know where I was coming from. Thanks for putting up with me again.
You're very welcome. I don't see any, but trustee Ratain?
We can talk about it next meeting, but I would like you to go over the impact of our CDL range and how that's going to impact our budget.
I'm sorry, can you just say that?
The impact of the CDL range getting put in place and operational, how it impacts our budget next, next, our next budget.
And, and the, the general answer, and correct me if I'm wrong, none of that is part of our general fund. So most of what, not all, but most of what we talked about today was general fund and general fund revenue, but we can absolutely get that information, and it was from our dedicated fund for Dr.버 training, and then some grant funds from the state.
Anything else on that point, trustee Ratain?
Thank you for your comments, Greg.
Thank you. I do think it's an excellent point, and frankly exciting that that's all off general budget, but thank you for pointing that out. Any other questions, comments?
I, I just want to echo that I, I always appreciate trustee Musa, the perspective that I get when you speak, I've learned a lot each time, each budget cycle we go through. And I think one of the things I've learned in the three years I've been sitting here is that three-legged stool is how this college was created, which is, the college would be supported by, one-third of the expenses would be covered by taxpayers, one-third by the state, and one-third by students, and I think we're looking at a pretty wobbly stool these days that this board is going to have to come to terms with at some point, and starting with making sure that we keep our voice strong in Topeka, right, Mr. Chairman, so that they know that we're here and we need their state funding to even that out. But we also, I think we're going to have to talk about the tuition, because it just, it's getting more and more lopsided for our local taxpayers, and I don't think, I don't know that that's fair or right by them and what this board should do, so, appreciate your comments.
I thank you, unless there's anything else. Trustee Hamel, did you have anything? I can't see you, sorry.
No, I'm good for now, thank you.
I just wanted to echo, and believe it or not, closer to trustee Musa's opinion than, than not, I too appreciate it and paid more attention to him than I ever thought I did, but I think our reserves are a very good thing, and I hope this is relatively relevant, that I think we used reserves during COVID quite a bit. I think it was key and critical that we had that in place at the time of a global emergency, so I suppose I should say thank you to the, to the state government for allowing that statute and allowing us to be able to do that. You know, I would ask that the Senate not approve what the House has passed, and just say, as we see in other states, we're part of national and state associations for community college trustees, and frankly, if you break it, you buy it. And if you want to limit our ability to raise a budget, you know, the state and, and local government's going to be even more increasingly reliant on, on the state to provide money that they have been in my 10 years, very reluctant to provide. So I echo trustee Musa's sentiment that we're thrilled to have, you know, closer to the commitment of the three-legged stool that trustee Smith Everett referenced. I would say it's harder to acknowledge that we don't need to raise tuition and fees, I've been a big proponent of keeping tuition and fees low, and I think given the climate and the current circumstances surrounding higher education, lower enrollment, the, the very real drop in birth rates that we're looking at, that the raise of tuition and fees is imminent. You know, for many years, and I agree with trustee Musa's sentiment, that, that we do things in a pretty open fashion here. And that leads me to, I don't know how long I've been saying it, but, but inflation looms over us, and so I, I respect the administration's recommendation here of .5 mil. I think it's a very reasonable business decision. I think with inflation looming and the very real priorities that we have to make in a budget, you know, where we're at and with inflation, there's not a whole lot that's budget, you know, where we're at and with inflation, there's not a whole lot that's sustainable here, cutting at 0.5. I think we, I would rather keep as much as we can and frankly not cut the mill so that we can adjust for inflation. I believe it's next year is a, is a faculty association contract year. So we have that coming. And I know that Dr. Sobchak used to always thank the trustees. My very, one of my very first votes on this board was to raise the mill, one mil or 0.75 mils in 2013. And it, it's attractive. I want to cut taxes. I probably voted against most of those mill cuts. It's out there. Trustee Hamill will remind us in a couple of years, so I'll just own it. But, you know, I'd do anything to protect this college. And I think everyone on this board and at this diocese would do that. And so again, we'd ask the Senate not to, not to approve that. And I, I would probably be against cutting the mill 0.5, just to make that public. With respect to revenue neutral, I think I've said my piece, I had my notes here, just going down it. You know, I had, I have a client this week, he's a contractor. He told me that April 15th, all of his expenses went up 30%. Now, maybe that's because OPEC cut production and now the cost of fuel and everything is up for them to provide the services and materials that we need. But folks, we're looking at very real market changes and shifts, spring offensive in the Ukraine and uncertainty in the markets surrounding Taiwan. I mean, it's, it's, it's all relevant to us. So I, I think, believe it or not, some, in my business dealings and in personal life, I'm somewhat conservative, even if I might have a bleeding heart politically. I would beseech everyone to consider that, that we, we have to make very real choices. And if we're going to cut this mill, what are we going to do next year with the faculty? And I thank everyone for their questions and commitment to operate here in good faith. I just wanted to share my opinion. And with that, I'll be quiet. Thank you all for everyone that provided this budget workshop. Thank you all for your work. I know it's, you know, extremely professional presentation and my opinions are my own. Anything else in response to that before we move on to a suddenly crowded room? Janelle, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Janelle.
Well done.
I don't know if Rachel ever got an ovation, but she should have.
Yes.
You did the pledge of allegiance, right?
We did.
Mm-hmm. Then we move on to awards and recognitions, and I will turn it over to Dr. Bound.
Thank you. All of a sudden I looked at them. The room's fuller than what we're used to seeing. So where's our student? There he is. Anyways, Carson, if you'd like to come up, as you know, this for me is one of the highlights of each month, is to get to spend a few minutes with one or more of our students. And so I'd like to introduce you to Carson Couch. Carson?
Hi, everybody. My name is Carson Couch, and I'm an accounting major who lives in Liberty, Missouri. I grew up in Alatah, Kansas, and I've also lived in Omaha, Nebraska, and Starkville, Mississippi. I started JCCC in the fall of 2021, and I'll graduate next month in May of 2023. I'll be attending the University of Central Missouri this coming fall, where I will finish my bachelor's in accountancy and hopefully go on to pursue a master's in accountancy and my CPA license. Here at JCCC, I work on campus as a student life ambassador, where I make IDs, work the college switchboard, plan events for students, and I coach the collegiate leadership competition team. I'm also involved with Student Senate, where I'm the treasurer. I chair the budget committee and I co-chair the, sorry, I co-chair the service and fundraising committee. I chose JCCC because of its affordability and amazing classes. I moved here with my family to Kansas City in 2021 from Omaha, Nebraska, in order to help take care of my grandparents. When I moved here, college seemed almost out of reach for me. Being hired as a student life ambassador here really helped me reach my goals of attending college. Here at JCCC, I've been fortunate enough to meet individuals who have supported and pushed me to reach my full potential. Dan Mueller in the counseling department has been over backwards for me on multiple occasions to make sure I got into the classes that I needed and made transferring to another college very seamless. Cassie Jordan, my boss in student activities, has helped me realize my true potential as a leader and has made going to work, to work the highlight of my day. And lastly, my amazing professors who have inspired me to continue my education and who model excellency in their fields of study. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments for Carson? Trustee Ingram.
Thank you so much. What a great report. And I started to make just a couple of notes, you know, affordability, amazing classes, and then you just kind of went on and on and on and on and on, and you captured everything. So thank you, all those things that we take great, great pride in as trustees here at the college. And I know our staff and administration, our faculty do it as well, but you just hit them all. So thank you. Best wishes.
Thank you very much. I have trustee Musial, then I see trustee Rail.
The college leadership competition, did you participate on a team before you started coaching it?
Yeah, so I didn't, I took the class that Cassie Jordan leads here at the college, and then I went straight into coaching it. I'll be honest, I personally didn't think that I was ready to be a leader, but my coworkers and my boss all pushed me to, you know, become a better leader. And we actually took first place last year, and this year we also did excellent.
I judged one year at Cassie and somebody else's request, if anybody wants to do that, it's a day-long competition and you wrote, the teams rotate through from the various schools, and it, it's a fabulous, a fabulous leadership and team building thing because the whole team has to be involved to solve all these, the individual challenges. So that, that's great training and Cassie does a great job. Thank you.
Trustee Rail, then trustee Ratan.
Thanks for your presentation. I, I certainly, from what you've said, it's pretty apparent that our community benefited from your transplant down from Omaha. You said something that really struck me that I hope a lot of people hear, both here and, and out, out there who may be listening, and that is, I thought college was out of reach for me. And I think that comment speaks to so many people who are thinking that same thing. And you sort of exemplify the notion that here at Johnson County Community College, college is not out of reach for anyone. And so thank you for your perseverance and your decision to be here and obviously for the contribution you've made while you've been here, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Ratan.
Thank you for your presentation. First of all, I believe that college is so much more than just going to classes, and you exemplify that in all of your involvement. So my two questions are, how do you juggle it all? And why did you choose accounting?
Great questions. I'll start with the accounting question. So I went to, in Omaha, Nebraska, I went to the best academic school, public school you could attend. It was called Miller North, and they have an excellent business department there where they offered a multitude of like economics, accountancy. And I had to take a class from the business department in order to graduate. And my junior year, when I moved there, I decided to take accounting. And I had an excellent teacher there who really inspired me to, you know, continue on in that field. I took accounting two there, and then I also took a managerial accounting class there. And that prepared me to come here. And when I got here, all the classes that I took also have prepared me as well. And then the first question.
How do you juggle all of your activities?
Yeah, so oftentimes, because I work here and because I take classes and I do a lot of excerpt curriculums, oftentimes, since I live 40 minutes away, I'll wake up at six in the morning, I'll drive out here, get to work on time. Sometimes I'll be here till eight o'clock at night, 10 o'clock at night. You'll find me over in the student center in the private rooms studying, finishing five-page papers sometimes, or I'll be over at the gym really late at night. But really managing my time and dedicating different aspects of my day to my commitments is how I get through it all.
Thank you.
I'll just say, my father was a 32-year-old bricklayer in 1989 when he came back to school here, and it was wonderful. What's the term for the kids that sit in the hallways? I was one of those kids during, while they were playing soccer classes. And so I commend you and I thank you for sharing that story. I have a niece that goes to Miller North. She was just in Newsies, the, the production up there.
Yeah, that's an excellent program.
Awesome school. In addition to giving us hope for the future, thank you for being here tonight. So thank you very much. The next item on our, oh, Dr. Ben. No, no, keep going.
Okay. So I'd like to bring Lisa Waldman to the podium. She's our vice president for workforce development and continuing education. And we wanted to introduce you to some of our business partners on the small business development side, so.
Thank you, Dr. Bound. So it is a pleasure to be here. We have over 258,000 small businesses in the state of Kansas. And as you all know, we have a small business development center here on campus that does tremendous work. We have for you this evening four of about 25 businesses who have been honored by the state as emerging, existing, and exporting businesses, as well as, what's my last? Capital Access. I didn't know that was the title of it. So we're resurrecting an old tradition from before the pandemic, which is the opportunity to have these business owners speak to you and, and learn a little bit more about them. They have come from as far as Manhattan today to, to be with us. And as always, you know, the SBDC team is tremendous. You'll hear from Jessica Johnson, the director, in a moment. But as, they support these businesses every step of the way, and every single member of the team is here this evening still supporting them. So truly appreciate all of you. And I am going to turn it over to Jessica to share some more with us about the businesses.
Thank you, Lisa, for the introduction and for the invitation to present our 2023 Small Businesses of the Year. Members of the board, I am so humbled and honored to have this opportunity tonight to showcase our award winners. It's not an easy feat to be selected for each of these awards as our team saw over 900 businesses last year. And the selection of, for this process is a competitive one. I have three of our team members here with us tonight to join in the celebration, advisors, John Adessi and Stephanie Willis, and Capital Access Center Director Vince Hayworth. These four companies you're about to get to know are very different and unique in their own regards, yet very similar too, with each pursuing growth and success, persevering through those tough times and rising against the odds. After you hear their stories, you too will see why they are our 2023 Small Businesses of the Year. So without further ado, I'm going to get into their stories. So our first winner of the year, the 2023 Emerging Business of the Year, CAP Creation. Owner Rashonda Wright and her husband are here with us tonight. If you guys want to join me up here while I read your story. So Rashonda Wright approached the SBDC to help with financial projections and funding for her business. CAP Creation is truly unique and special business because it creates an inclusive and hair-diverse graduation environment for high school and college students. Students with large curly textured hair have had problems fitting their graduation caps for years. So CAP Creation developed a product that transforms the existing graduation cap to fit all hair types. Rashonda worked with the SBDC to build her comprehensive financial forecast and to learn about different ways to secure funding needed for their business, including debt and equity financing. They also receive contact information for banks, lawyers, and other resources. Rashonda said that her experience with the SBDC stood out because of her advisor, John Adessi. She said John is amazing to work with. The level of detail and resources he provides is thorough and very well put together. Rashonda secured the knowledge she needed to, on her funding strategy and was successful in developing an effective financial forecast. The team of CAP Creation was able to put together their pitch deck, prepare for their first run of, round of funding. Sorry. This is not Rashonda's first business. In fact, she's a serial entrepreneur and has worked with SBDC advisor on two other businesses, a mobile gaming company and a thriving salon. Rashonda's also evaluated other business opportunities with John. For Rashonda, teamwork is crucial for product development, marketing efforts, and launching the product into the market. Building a strong support system to include mentorship, advisors, and board directors is vital for business success. Her advice to new business is straightforward. She said, follow your dreams, be patient, stay the course, also be flexible and ready to pivot when the time arises. So I present to you Rashonda and her husband, Ryan.
Any questions?
All hair types? They do not count.
That'd be the funniest thing you've ever said.
Chris Gray was thinking too.
Michael Jordan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our second business tonight, the 2023 Existing Business of the Year, Little Building Blocks Early Childhood Development Center. Odor Marcia Booton and her husband Jeff are here to join us tonight. If you guys would like to join me up here. Little Building Blocks was at capacity and approached the SBDC to help with a financial plan that forecasted their revenues and growth with the goal of expanding their facility to increase the number of children and families they can serve. Receiving funding was crucial since the business was keen on growing and needed the infrastructure to do so. Marcia emphasized how the SBDC was instrumental in the growth of her business. She said, I was able to build a strong business plan outlining my full growth plan. I was then able to find a local developer that came on board and built us a built-to-suit location that fit all of our needs. Her advisor, John Adessi, played a pivotal role in the success development of her business plan. She contacted John and spoke with him about what the goal was and how she really didn't know where to start. And so he worked at looking at the numbers, the growth we had and where, where they wanted to go. They developed a financial plan and were able to show what the business was, how the business be able to support the expansion. She also connected with Vince Hayworth, the director of the Capital Access Center, and together they used the financial plan and built it into a full business plan outlining the numbers, marketing, growth, and development options. Marcia was successful in securing her funding for the business and was able to build a strong business plan outlining their full potential. The new location doubles the capacity and Little Building Blocks is full, correct? Is once now full. They pride themselves on being an extension of their students' families. Students feel safe at their center and know that they provide a safe place for them to grow. They develop relationships with the families and maintain these relationships through active and open communication. They keep their staff for an extended periods of time, which helps delivers consistency and continuity of care. They've been in business for 17 years and have served more than 2,000 children in their community, as well as employed several hundred people. Marcia's best advice for new business is know your numbers. When you do not have a clear picture of what your income needs, needs to be compared to what your operating costs are, you will not make it. Also, you need to build a savings to help you through the tough times. If you don't know your numbers, get help and learn how. So I present to you Marcia and her husband Jeff.
Any questions for Marcia or Jeff? Or would you all like to say anything?
I am curious with all of it. I'm sorry, didn't ask Rashonda, how you found out about, that there was a Small Business Development Center? Because I, as much as they're out there, I think small businesses still don't understand what a great asset this is and how much help you can get.
I Googled it. It's kind of how I found it. We had gone to a conference for like a national childcare conference, and somebody had mentioned that, you know, look, look at your local college, that there's always support there. So we came back from the conference and I Googled it, and I was like, okay, there it is, and called, and I think we got the next day after I called, had a meeting, and, you know, within just a couple of weeks, we were off and running. So.
Great.
Went from 92 kids to 194, and from 18 employees to I have 44 today.
Awesome. Well done. So let me just say thank you, like, for all the taxes you pay.
All the little, little college students I'm growing for you.
Thank you for that as well.
Our next awardee, the 2023 Exporting Business of the Year, Aeromod. And representing Aeromod is Andy Ryan. Andy, you want to join? Aeromod partnered with the Kansas SBDC to become more proficient in the practices and tools available to Kansas companies to export their products. The company specializes in custom-designed wastewater treatment facilities by offering the latest engineered solutions. Andy connected with advisor John Adessi, who helped him by establishing and maintaining a network of experts in the mechanics of exporting and export finance. The client shared, the team at JCCC SBDC are professionals. John is a great teacher. Every person he puts us in touch with has been eager to help, and they too are experts and professionals in their fields. They have advised and equipped us for success. Andy successfully completed a multimillion-dollar contract with a customer in North Africa and is well into their second equally large project in the same region. They've also gained knowledge to begin making investments of resources into expanding back into the Latin America export market. When asked about how his business stands out next to the competitors, Aeromod President Todd Steinbach said, we have bought more of the production in-house as opposed to competitors who have outsourced most of their fabrication. Because of this, we have better control over our quality control and our ability to innovate. His advice for new businesses was to keep the expenditures low as financing was one of their greatest challenges. He elaborates, even if you have a few good years, keep the expenditures down. With difficulties in financing, a stable company needs to bill up his war chest. And so here tonight, Andy is here to represent Aeromod.
Andy, would you like to say something or any questions for Andy?
I can answer to how we found the SBDC.
I can answer to how we found the SBDC.
That'd be great, yeah.
Our owners couldn't be here. It's trade show season for them, so they're fully engaged in our new project. So they're thankful for the award and the opportunity. My, one of our owners came to me with this card. And he's like, I think this may be a bogus organization. Can you just give them a call? It linked me to John. I knew nothing about exporting. My boss was saying, hey, you need like an exporting, go make yourself smart. So I called John and then drove over here for a couple of days. And he gave us all the tools. And if he didn't know, he got us pointed to somebody that would actually stay in contact with us and help us through the process. So it's been great.
What exactly did they do? I, pardon my ignorance.
So for John.
You may not know, like what were the logistics of what they helped you with?
Oh my goodness. I knew nothing about exporting. So all I knew is I had a customer in Algeria that wanted a wastewater treatment plant built. And they sent us a contract that had been developed over somebody that worked at the company well before I got there. So all the institutional knowledge was gone. So I had to figure out, how do I even get it there? How do I find a freight forwarding company that I can work with easily? Somebody asked me, do you have a letter of credit? I didn't know what that was. I had done a lot of domestic projects, but never a letter of credit. Basically, the contract with the overseas company helped me, made me smart on that. Actually got me in touch with Commerce Bank and their guy who, he was a wealth of knowledge and just filled me in on that. What else did we, man? We went over, also looking at other markets. So we did some market analysis of other places. Our company did a lot of exports in the 90s. The owner at that time loved to travel. So that was kind of his thing. Well, then the domestic market took off, so there wasn't much exporting. So we lost all that institutional knowledge. So we had to get really smart on it really quick. And they were able to give us to all each of those areas.
In your industry, why is institutional knowledge so critical?
We're a small company, we have 36 people. And everybody has distinct roles in there. And the lady that I took over from had been there since the company began in 1991. So she had all of her notes, she had a photographic memory. So she had it all in there, how she had done this. And then she left and there wasn't much there except for the old documents that were in triplicate form that you fill out as a card copy. And a lot of that had changed since the 90s as well. The laws, even the forms you use. So we had to rebuild that. So now I have a book on my shelf when I'm gone. The next person can pull off and take a look at that. So the institutional knowledge of how we do it. But also I have a binder that has all the business cards. When you run into a hurdle with this, this is the guy that will or lady that will help you out.
Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. But any other questions for Andy?
Could we call Rashonda back up and ask her too? I'm just curious. I mean, there's so, three totally different businesses on how.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Does she'd like to come back up? I think we're calling an audible. Trustee Smith Everett.
Just how did you find SBDC? Did I say all the right letters in the right order?
I found it actually on our first business, which is Zoom Mobile Gaming. And we were looking to expand. And so it was like a Google search of some form or another. And it actually brought up the SBDC in Kansas City, Missouri. And I think I called them first and then they referred me over to the JCC location since we lived in Johnson County. And then we've been working with John ever since.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. That was for you too, Andy.
Our final business tonight, the 2022 Existing Business of the Year for the Capital Access Center, RSV Med Spa and Cosmetic Eye Institute. And owner Selena Foo is here with us tonight. Selena? RSV Med Spa and Cosmetic Eye Institute approached Kansas SBDC for assistance with their financial projections and funding for the acquisition of an existing business. A central role of the SBDC is assisting clients with funding for business starts, expansions, or in this case, a business purchase. Vincent Hayworth, the director of the Capital Access Center, which is also part of the SBDC, along with John Adessi, they helped Dr. Foo achieve her business ownership goal with the tremendous guidance and support through developing detailed financial projections and identifying multiple interested lenders. Selena says they guided me every step of the way and they cared about my personal growth just as much as they cared about my business. They reached out to many different lenders on my behalf and offered me great advice. Vince and John were also very personable. And every few days, they made sure to check in on me. Selena was successful in securing adequate funding for her business. And she is an oculoplastic surgeon. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Oh, fantastic. And makes sure to be on site every day to provide direct physician supervision since noticed that a lot of other businesses lack in the same area and are usually run by investors. Selena noted that the work that goes into a business is far from easy, but well worth it and advises others to always make sure to verify your steps. Dr. Foo.
Any questions for Dr. Foo or Dr. Foo, would you like to say anything?
Can you tell us more about what you're? I don't have a clear understanding of what you do or what the new business does.
Okay, so I am an oculoplastic surgeon. So I do plastic surgery around the eyes. Been for years for other employers as employee. So in February 2020, I decided to start my own business. So that was right before March, the pandemic. So I had a lot, the lockdown. And then it was, as a physician on your own, you need to get credentials with insurances first. And usually that takes about three months. So that process during the lockdown took maybe six to nine months in 2020. But lucky for me, I had little kids at home. So I stayed home, homeschooled them because that's all you could do, right? Because the school was closed. And then we, I took call for Overland Park Regional as a oculoplastic surgeon. So as an ophthalmologist, basically, anybody who had any eye emergency, I would get called and go in. And that was how I paid, you know, put food on the table, so to speak. And then in 2021, I became a client for RSVP Med Spa, 135 and Metcalf. So then I approached the owner and I asked her, oh, if I refer clients to you, would you become my mutual referral source? And she said, yes, of course. But if I want to retire, she was turning 60. And then she said, I want to retire. I don't want to manage this anymore. So do you want to buy the med spa? So that's how I came to this opportunity. So as an oculoplastic surgeon, the most common surgery I do for functional complaint is usually juvie eyelid, eyelid turning in, turning out, misdirected lashes, fracture repair, tearing, thyroid eye disease, that type of stuff. Cosmetic surgery would be, you know, eye bag removal, brow lift, eye lift type of surgery. We also do reconstruction after cancer is removed around the eyelid. So we can put the eyelid back, remove stuff around the eyelid if, you know, there's a growth like a bump or lesion. On the medical spa side, when I bought the med spa, it was in April 2022. So last year, so it's exactly about a year. John and Vince were instrumental in this process. How I came to know about the SBDC was my banker. So I had wanted to get a loan. So I called around the different banks. So one of the banker I met at a networking event. And she said, well, this would be a small business loan. So you need to talk to the small business loan people. And that's how I met John first. And then he looped me into Vince. And then they given me multiple sources. But because at the time when I was taking the loan, I had no idea that you actually had to talk to multiple people. And then even after you talked to them and fill out a lot of papers, not all of them actually come through. So lucky for me, the same banker I approached was the one, or at least her bank was the one that provided the loan. So it really worked out for me. On the spa side, we provide anything you can think of to look young and beautiful, I guess. So, you know, facials, peels, botox filler, you know, treating acne, treating rosacea, treating pigmentation, body toning. So all those type of things. And I think having physician ownership is important because the law does say that you have to be a physician to own a med spa. But a lot of times they're investors and there's just somebody else signing a chart. So they're not really on site. I do pride ourselves in trying to provide a separate, a different level of excellence to our clients. So having this side of the business really helps my other side. Because my other side, we do see elderly patients who are 80s, 90s. So that is not, you know, insurances are very hard to deal with. So this side provides the revenue stream so I can do more free work.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Trustee Ingram has something for you, doctor.
No, really for all of them. No, it's really for all of them. And I just wanted to say I had an opportunity to visit with John earlier today. And John and Vince are standing back there just like proud parents of all of you and take such great pride in what you've done. We just had an opportunity to talk very briefly so I knew, you know, what was happening and what was on the agenda previously tonight. But to just kind of hear a little bit about you all. But as you all are speaking, I just wish you could see the pride that they have in all of you. So it's very evident. And thank you all for being here this evening and congratulations.
And thank you to Jessica and the team.
Thank you very much. We made this opportunity.
Thank you.
I just want to quickly connect a couple of dots for you. And I know we are running along here. If you recall, the Capital Access Center, Vince's position with JCC is new as of July. He had been doing this for the state as a whole. And then we were able to take on that role. And we are so thrilled because his work helps businesses, just like you've heard. And it may be interesting to you that we have a business from Manhattan in the mix here tonight. And that's because we have a specialty area in export. So John and Stephanie Willis are both certified in export counseling, which is quite a certification to earn, I might add. So that is why we're able to serve the entire state and have businesses, you know, from around the state that do that. So all of these businesses were honored in March. In Topeka, they have a wonderful ceremony. They were honored on the House floor and in the Senate floor, as well as the governor spoke to them in the afternoon.
So if we have people who specialize in export, they have certifications in exporting, right? That could be useful to agriculture and other things that go on in the state?
Absolutely everything, yeah.
Grains and planks are the biggest export.
We get boxed into being Johnson County or urban and suburban here. And I just, it's crazy who watches this. So just for the education of those seven to 15 people that watch consistently, that they know that we're here to serve the entire state of Kansas.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it might be. That concludes our awards and recognition ceremony at 5:43. The next item on our agenda is the open forum section. I'm going to run through this real quickly and say that the, there's nobody here tonight for the open forum.
That's correct.
The open forum is an agenda item at each regularly scheduled board meeting. And I'd rather get to Dick Carter, but I got to say this. Speakers wanting to make public comment via Zoom webinar must register by completing the registration form below by 5:00 PM the day before the scheduled board of trustees meeting. Speakers must provide their name, city of residence, name, any group they are representing, the topic of discussion, and a brief one or two sentence summary of the presentation, as well as the email address and phone number of the speaker will be using to access the Zoom meeting. Do they have to do social security numbers? No, okay. So the Zoom link and conference number will be listed at the JCC Board of Trustees Meeting page. And registered speakers should be familiar with the Zoom functionality before logging into the Board of Trustees Meeting. Registered speakers should wait until called upon by the chair to speak, at which time the recognized registered speaker will be granted electronic access to address the board. Speakers wanting to make public comment in person must register through this form by 5:00 PM the day before or in person 15 minutes before the start of the meeting outside of this room, GEB 137. Each registered speaker will be allotted five minutes to speak. If there are a significant number of registered speakers, the time will be reduced for each registered speaker. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked, please, to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. Comments may not inflict or threaten harm, cause a breach of the peace, whatever that is, consisting of fighting words, incite individuals to commit a crime or cause panic, and generally not engage in obscenity or defamatory conduct. The Chair of the Board has the authority to keep order and impose reasonable restrictions on any disruptive behavior of those participating in a board meeting. And I will say, I read that generally, I didn't do it last month and I felt bad. And I just worry that when the time comes, that we have to know all that. You all are going to thank me that we ran through that each and every time. So nobody says, I didn't know what to do. Any questions on that before I move on to the next item on our agenda? The next item on our agenda, Board Reports. And we'll start with Mr. Daniel Gonzalez.
Good evening. And today I brought with me an amazing part of our Student Senate, our Student Senate Secretary, Kinley Smith. Before I go on for the rest of my board report, Kinley Chapel, excuse me, I'm sorry. Before I move on to the rest of my report, she's going to go ahead and give a few updates for the Student Senate.
Um, so.
Good evening.
Good evening, sorry. So for the last week of March, we had service week. And we kicked it off with the Down Syndrome Innovations Event, which was a lot of fun to get to hear Chris Nicich speak. We just kind of greeted families and welcomed them into the campus. And then we read to children at the Child Development Center here on campus. And that was a lot of fun as well. And then we had a few people go to the Ernie Miller Center to clean up. And they pulled weeds to get it ready for the next team of volunteers that are going to go in to plant the flowers. And then we also volunteered with the Clear Connect Program. So we went to a few of the classes and we had a lot of fun with them. During the time in between, it was really fun to talk to them and they were super excited. So and then also our social media presence here on campus. For Senate, we are trying to get better about that. So my team of Public Relations, we have been trying to schedule a lot more posts so that way we're able to show like what, show the students what we do and who Senate is. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next part of our report. We have Student Senate MidSemester Elections. Recently elected senators include Baxter Rhine, Mason Seberg. Our new Executive Board and Senator Election Time Period is coming up. The applications are now from April 4th to the 28th. And elections will be from May 1st to 3rd. First, the Student Senate Funding Requests. We've had a multitude of funding requests since our last board report. BSU Experience, the JCSVA NCAA Watch Party, Luna Latinidad Leadership Night, the Bollywood Event, Pickleball Club, they requested funding for their materials. IDSA, they had a garden party, International Club for several events they're going to be putting on. The total amount we have given out this, this year through Student Senate is $36,000 out of $38,000. For new organizations, we've had two new organizations since our last board report, which is Developing Diversity in STEM and History Club. That's all I had for you guys this meeting.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Daniel or Kimberly?
I want to thank you all for all the service that you're doing out in the community. That's fantastic. And I had at my school, a group of fifth graders just go through Ernie Miller last week. So they benefited from the work you did right before that. So thank you for all that. I didn't know you all were doing all that out in the world and we appreciate it. And if you listen to this list of activities, it just sounds like a party all the time around here. I don't know, I don't know why I'm going to my place. I shouldn't be coming here every day. So thank you all so much for all you do to support our students.
Kinley, I apologize. I said Kimberly. I apologize. Sorry.
It's a heartbeat.
No, no, it's my mistake. Any other questions for Kinley or Daniel? I had two brothers, one, just one brother on Student Senate. They were twins. It's hard to keep.
We don't know how many brothers.
Why, not all three of them were on Student Senate. There was just.
Just kidding.
Selective. Anyway, thank you for continuing the tradition and all the time it takes. And I think you'll find it'll look good on your resume and thank you for doing it. So thank you very much. The gentleman from Shawnee County, Mr. Dick Carter is next with the College Lobbyist Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope everyone will clap after I'm done with my report as well.
I'll set the timer.
I'm happy to make it as quick as possible. I have a feeling there's going to be a little bit of a conversation. I was in the collab listening to the budget. I was in the collab listening to the, the budget hearing as well, the budget presentation as well as monitoring the consensus revenue estimating group that was meeting and delivering some numbers to the state of Kansas. And so I'll talk about those a little bit later and I, I know that you have some questions regarding a couple of other things that I heard the dialogue about during that budget discussion. Legislature concluded its first adjournment in what is becoming more of a tradition than probably should be in conducting an all-night marathon session in both chambers. They gavelled out around 4:30 AM on April 7th, Friday. Their goal was to get done on Thursday, April the 6th, and there were many discussions that, that included being done even before that. We're also hearing that, that the veto session will only be three days. So there's still a lot to do. We'll talk a little bit about that a little bit later in the report, but remember what Mom and Dad always said about what happens after dark. Probably not a lot of good and it's time to get home. So that's a little bit of, of what we'll talk about this evening. House and Senate sent more than 50 bills to the Governor's Office for review and action. We're now beginning to see some daily reports of either signed bills or vetoes on those bills. And many of those measures were conference committee reports, some of the items of which never passed one House or the other, some only had hearings in committees. And so that's kind of the, the environment that we're, that we're working within Topeka. Legislature did pass a mega budget before going home and, and they will still need to address K-12 education's budget when they return next week. So again, like I said, three days is not a lot of time to discuss 60% of the state's overall budget. And that will be quite a, quite a large task ahead of them, as well as some of the other things left yet to do before heading home for signee die. Some of the community college system highlights in the budget bill, really, I won't go through them in detail because I did politicize them in the, in the report, but we're looking at a potential of $28.6 million of new dollars that we really weren't anticipating. When the Governor's Budget came out in January, the only amount that was budgeted for, for higher education in the community college sector was about $7 million. So over the course of the, the three months that, that the Budget Committees met and that legislators were in Topeka, that number is now about 28.6 million. The approximate amount that we will see, should everything make its way through the process, is around 5.6 million. That's a lot different, that's almost the total amount that was budgeted for the community college sector, again, out of the Governor's Budget. So lots of hard work went into making those numbers happen. I mentioned that the consensus revenue estimating group met today. They met at 4:30 PM during the middle portion of your, your budget workshop. And just to kind of give you a thumbnail sketch of, of what we're looking at, that group looks at all kinds of things that make up their forecast of, of what revenues and what the state budget should look like. They looked at the impact of inflation and the number of, the change to the numbers since the November estimates, when that group last met in November of '22. They look at oil production in Kansas. They looked at the inflation rate, like I said. They looked at natural gas production and storage, manufacturing and the strength of the US dollar. So all of those things plus more go into how they formulate where they believe things are at. I will say that it was made very clear that none of the legislation that is on the table or that has not been signed were factored into any of the numbers that, that the Revenue Estimating Group came up with. And so, for example, that would mean the, the 0% food sales tax that's contained in Senate Bill 169, or the 5.15% flat tax that would have a differing impact on the state budget, the apex legislation changes that, that allow for economic development projects of, of significant magnitude. None of those items are in the, the estimate numbers. So what we're looking at since November, and keep in mind, they adjusted those numbers up significantly based on the, the receipts that were coming into the state, now at a 30-month-plus record for meeting or exceeding the, the revenue expectations over that 30-month period. So for FY '23, the current fiscal year that we're in, those numbers are 123 million above the November estimates. And for FY '24, revenue expectations are $109 million above what the November estimates were from last year. So I think that, again, that'll play into some of the activities that go on for the three days, three days, that the legislature is supposed to come back to Topeka and finish up some business as far as meeting, meaning that, that's about 200-some-odd million-plus dollars above revenue expectations. When you look at things like, and the Governor's currently reviewing some of these items, but when you look at things like Senate Bill 169 that has a number of different tax policy changes that are fairly significant, those are in the neighborhood of $500 million-plus per year and that keeps adding up each year that something like that would move, move on in perpetuity if it were signed into law. So again, those are all things that play into what the, the final budget estimates will, will look like when the legislature comes back, when they finish K-12 education budget as well. So let's talk a little bit about some of where, the issues that we've engaged on, on behalf of JCCC, where those are as the session draws to a close. So far, so this was a little bit of the conversation that you had and if you want to, if you want to break in and talk about them as I go through them, that's fine. There's, there's five or six items that I'd like to at least touch on briefly. But in Senate Bill 8, which is a conference committee report that has about 20 different issues in it, about 12 different bills and about 20 different issues, several of those, those issues in there have never had a vote on the House or on the Senate. This is the bill that includes the government competition piece, so that impacts any public entity that would offer a service or have a building that offers services that might be available in the private sector. So for us, that could be the food court, it could be the childcare center, the Herstein Center that we have as a learning lab here. We're going to talk about that in a different manner a little bit later in the report as well. It would create a tax exemption for property tax and for sales tax for any entity that came along in the private sector after those items were, after the, after our entities were established. It starts to get real confusing because the issues changed, it was a moving target as the legislature continued to cobble together issues around the, the government competition piece. We call it the Genesis Health Club bill because that's, that's where it initiates from and that's where it's been coming from for the past four, four sessions or so. The other item of import in there, and there's, again, there's a number of items that, that everyone might find some level of importance on, is the revenue neutral notice, the revenue neutral rate notice piece in there that would continue the payment by the state for the mailing and printing of those notices. Now, there's also a provision that's been added for sending those, those notices out via electronic methods. Very few people are doing that. There's a lot of concern as it relates to, are the notices actually delivered? Do people receive them? Do they go into the ether somewhere? Email addresses change far more often than, than home addresses or street addresses do. So those are, those are a couple of items of sincere concern that are in there. The bill passed the House, Senate, the House, the bill passed the House 76 to 43. That's not a veto-proof majority, takes 84 in the House, and it still is awaiting action in the Senate. What happens when, when legislators come back on Wednesday is the Senate will likely take that up. Again, when you're talking about a conference committee report, if it's a Senate bill, when there's an agreement, it starts in the House and works its way back to the Senate, which is a little bit different than the regular portion of the session. So the Senate will vote on that measure when they return. It'll get sent to the Governor. Once the Governor receives the enrolled version of the bill, she has 10 days to act on it. She can sign the bill into law, allow it to become law without her signature, or veto the measure. Now, like I said, there's a bunch of other things contained in that bill that, that are both, depending on how you look at it, good or bad. Should she veto that measure, there's really not another opportunity except for signee die, which is typically a ceremonial, formal closure to the legislative session each year and it occurs a, a next number of dates after, after the veto session ends. So that, that date is a floating date at this point. The, typically not everybody comes back for signee die, so we'll see what happens should that, should that action occur on that particular bill. You talked a little bit about the flat tax, the 0% slide to food sales tax for state dollars only and a slider, it got referred to as the Siegfried Slider because Arlen Siegfried established a machinery and equipment phase-out tax when he was in the legislature. And so they're using that term continued for social security income tax exemption. So there'll be a sliding scale and it'll move the ceiling up for folks that are, that are receiving social security income. Those are all contained in Senate Bill 169. That bill is presently in, in the Governor's Office on her desk for review, for, for action. We're unsure what, what will happen with that particular bill. There was a little bit of conversation about the property valuation cap, started out as a 3% cap annually. That failed in the Senate, requires a veto-proof majority to, to pass both the House and Senate. Those constitutional amendments don't even go to the Governor's Office for a signature necessarily because they already have the constitutionally required number of votes for being veto-proof. That very day that the bill failed, a new one was introduced on the Senate floor, it was 1611, Senate Concurrent Resolution 1611, it would just increase the cap to 4%. That, that's definitely going to play into your conversations about what future budget years look like. The bill passed the Senate, or the, the resolution rather, passed the Senate 28 to 11, so has one more than it needs, but probably won't be taken up by the House until next year. So that'll be a 2024 session issue that the legislature looks at with regard to, to what, what a cap looks like on valuations. I will say that some are viewing this particular piece of legislation as the entrance into more of a taxpayer bill of rights type of situation, something that Colorado dealt with since the nineties and, and found its way out because they have some other sources of revenue. But that's, that's a very difficult thing when states who have a growing economy have to deal with that type of initiative and referendum. That's not what's being proposed here, but many are calling it the entrance into that conversation. Let's talk a little bit about specific higher education bills.
Dick, before you go there, 169, what did you say the Governor was planning to do with 169?
I don't think we know. It's on her desk, awaiting action.
Yes, thank you.
Conference Committee Report on Senate Bill 123 contains the Kansas Promise Act and Adult Learner Grant, pieces of legislation. We worked through those through the entire process and ran into a little problem as far as timing and getting the bill across the aisles. There's lots of interesting activity going on this year, the way bills are moving around. That bill did make its way through the process and is awaiting review and action from the Governor's Office. I don't anticipate that there will be any problem with that. In another veto message recently, she mentioned that she's all about economic development and please join her at the Economic Development Table. Those, those items contained in that, that particular piece of legislation are specifically that.
Dick, I'm sorry, a veto message is, is sort of like when the President has a signing comment or a signing message, is that right?
Typically, the Governor will, of the state, will issue a paragraph or two as to why a veto is occurring. And so in, contained in those messages can be other, other information that you can pick up on for what, for what it might mean for other pieces.
Sorry for the interruption, but thank you.
Another piece of legislation that we engaged on, because we have a program here at the college, was a Filming Senate Tax Credit. And that particular piece of legislation is still making its way through the process. Don't know if it'll get taken up when the House and Senate come back next week or not, but it will certainly be there for the 2024 session if, if not. There was a donor intent bill that came fairly late in the ballgame. That, that plays out in things like our foundation. That bill was signed into law on the 19th of this week. Another issue that just popped up out of nowhere that includes the college because of the way the definition is written, is a cybersecurity issue. And that bill was also signed into law on the 18th, which I believe was earlier this week. And any, any type of cybersecurity attack or event would require that our, our Chief Information Technology Officer report that to the state within 12 hours of an occurrence. Something like that's never happened before. Our, the state doesn't operate our computer systems, they don't oversee them. In fact, many of the computer systems that they do have are antiquated compared to what we use. And so that is, that is something that, that surprised a number of people as it made its way very quickly at the end of the session through the process. We noticed, noticed a issue with the way the state was issuing payments for the driver's training bill that we got fixed last year for our driver's education programs. It apparently required another fix and so we got that worked through the committee process. And that is in Conference Committee Report 2060. And so there's a number of other issues in there, but that's the one we're watching for. It has, it was adopted by the Senate, but it, we're awaiting action for when the House comes back. That is an important one for our driver's ed program to make sure it crosses the finish line. Couple more, just real quick. I will touch on, I mentioned the childcare issue. There was another bill out there to reduce the regulations, reduce fees, increase the number of children per care provider, increase or increase the number of students, the children per square footage space, kind of a controversial measure that was worked through in a series of controversial moves in the, in the legislative process. The Governor vetoed that bill on the 19th and we'll, we'll see if, we'll see if the legislature can, can get the votes to override that or not. They're going to be busy with a lot of overrides, a number of, I didn't count them before I came today, but there have been a, a number of vetoes in this particular session. And depending on what you look at as a strategy there, sometimes when you start getting momentum to override one vetoed measure, it can, it can build with the legislature to override a number of them, but, but that's not always the case. I think that kind of captures everything in a nutshell. I would just say that while I was sitting here, we were still waiting to find out when the House and Senate Budget Committees were planning on meeting. There had been no notice about that, even though they're scheduled to meet on Monday or Tuesday. They are going to get together at 9:00 AM on Monday morning. The session is what we call pro forma, so not everybody's required to attend. They'll kind of work through some of the omnibus, the end of the session budget items that weren't addressed in the regular budget, as well as the K-12 education budget. And then everyone comes back on Wednesday, the 26th, and supposedly three days. The 29th is the, the third day, the 90th day, the 29th is a Saturday, it's the 90th day. Again, leadership is projecting that they'll be done on Friday. So that is kind of where we're at. There's some other things, we'll, we'll catch up with those maybe on the next month's report as we sort of figure out just exactly how everything ended up. Because I think there's going to be some summer activities that we'll be very actively involved in with regard to where higher education's moving as, as things progress and as, as a known enrollment cliff is, is coming and what higher education structures look like in Kansas. So that's, that's, that's for another meeting to talk about, but I think that'll stop there, Mr. Chairman, attempt to address any questions I can.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Any questions for Mr. Carter? I will say, who, who is Opportunity Solutions Project?
A group out of Florida that has been very active in the legislative process this year. And they've engaged on a, a number of bills, some, some of which there were no proponents, some of which they, they would have a local person testify and some which would be a representative from their organization out of Florida testifying via WebEx. Just a very, kind of a think tank type of organization that's engaging in Kansas on a number of legislative issues.
I interned in the Senate, as, as you know, and I worked on legislative races. So at 7746 and 2117, neither one of those is a veto majority, right?
Right, takes 84 in the House and 27 in the Senate.
Nevertheless, a legislative majority voted to increase the number of children per worker at a childcare or daycare facility. Is that right?
Did I list the vote on there?
Yeah, 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 I'm just saying, but this group in the Kansas Chamber wanted to increase the number of children per worker, so they, they want to allow more kids per worker at a.
There's a hot topic of conversation going on in Topeka and around the state.
We have a daycare here?
Childcare.
Oh, okay. Thanks for presenting this information. I had some other things, go ahead.
Go back to side.
Go back to cybersecurity and the report to the state within 12 hours of occurrence. We were kind of curious to that. Can you speak a little bit more about that one?
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Can you speak a little bit more to the cybersecurity?
Not a lot. There's a number of increased attacks across the nation and around the world. The bill defines entities as subdivisions of the state and includes municipal governments and local governments. And it would require, you know, some of the small towns, it's probably not as big of an issue for someone like JCCC. It is an additional unfunded mandate with a requirement that within a 12-hour period you report an event that has occurred on your computer system. But there are some that, some local units of government that probably have a couple computers.
Okay, thank you.
It ranges all across the state.
Anything else for Mr. Carter?
I just wanted to get clarification, thank you, Mr. Chairman, sorry, on the donor intent bill. I may have skipped over that, but you did say it was signed into law and will affect our foundation. Do you have more information on that?
So the bill was helped along a little bit by some of the state universities. The bill comes out of that same group that the chair asked a question about. The issue is if a donor gives a certain amount of money and has an expectation, either understood or in writing, of what that money is to go to or for, that's what the bill provides protections for. So that gets to be a little bit of a gray area when you're talking about foundations, charitable organizations that receive charitable gifts.
Okay, thank you. The only other comment I want to make is I appreciate the extensiveness you give us. I listen to our local reporters as much as my bandwidth allows, but there are so many things each session that you do not know if you are not there at 2 o'clock in the morning or you don't have somebody sitting on the floor who texts you and says, you will not believe what's happening right now. So I am very grateful that you are our eyes and ears there and that we can see you in person sometimes to have this level of understanding, if we do have that much understanding with all that you've just covered, for a whole myriad of things that affect us, sometimes we don't even know they're coming. So appreciate that.
I had two more points. Dick, thank you, as always, and to Heather Morgan, and I believe Senator Baumgartner and everyone else who helped make the 28.665 million possible, and it certainly increases our share. I want to say thank you to you, thank you to the state, we do appreciate that. I do mean that in all earnestness, I mean, you can ask former trustee David Lindstrom and others that, we really do appreciate it. And to trustee Musel's point and everyone else's point, it helps make our jobs easier for the taxpayers if we have more money, and so we appreciate the money and the three-legged stool. I did want to correct myself, Dick. I think I had said that the 4% cap had passed the House, I was wrong, it passed the Senate.
It's a Senate resolution.
I misspoke earlier.
It needs to be taken up in the House.
Well, Dick, as always, thank you for everything. And unless there's any other questions, I think we'll move on. Trustee, continue.
The 5.6 million that we're going to get is a one-time, we're not expecting to get it every year.
So it's money that's added to the base, the intent would always be that it's money that is part of the budget moving forward, but that budget process changes every year and things that we were guaranteed last year weren't in the governor's budget recommendations this year. And so it's a little bit difficult to say with any level of certainty that that same amount will be the amount that we see next year in the base budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Because initially, in the governor's budget, there was nothing for community colleges.
About 7 million that would have been split amongst the 19.
Thank you.
Just clear, 7 million in new money.
Correct.
Community colleges.
Sorry.
I don't want to leave the impression that the governor decided not to fund community colleges. She included in her budget 7 million in new money. Right now, there's 26-point-something million in the budget for new money, so, okay.
Which is to say, if I may, Dick, and to Greg's point, that means our allies in the legislature, and the legislature then, found us 21 million more.
Also correct.
Okay, so, I mean, I love the governor, but thank you for Proddner. Any other questions or comments?
If I could just add, just quickly, Dick, to make sure I'm saying this correctly, what's proposed in the tiered and non-tiered is the continuation of a three-year process to re-center. Historically, there have been community colleges that have been overfunded, if you will, and others like us who have been underfunded, and it was a three-year process of re-centering to try and level that for all community colleges moving forward. And this is year three of that.
Is it year two or three?
I was thinking this is the final year of the, as we move into it.
Your analysis is correct.
Which is important for historical context, thank you very much. Dick, we could talk all night, thank you very much. Before we move on to our next item, I think I'm just going to ask for a brief recess, if I may, I need to use the restroom, for five minutes, 10 minutes, unless there's any objection, and then we'll rally back here.
Do we need a motion?
I think I can adjourn as the chair. Do you want to do a motion?
You're recessing, you're not.
We're not, we're not adjourning, we're just, yeah. If we come back, is nine minutes too long, or do you want less?
Some of us are doing the holiday dance.
All right, let's come back at 6:21. We're back after a brief recess, thank you all for that courtesy. The next item on our agenda is the Faculty Association Report by Professor Brett Cooper.
Good evening, thank you for the time. Spring has sprung finally, after a couple of false starts and a second winter, we finally made it to real spring. Last Friday night was the Colleges' Annual Night at the Nelson, where faculty and staff give talks related to pieces on display at the Nelson-Ackens Museum of Art. As usual, it was a great success. Spring is also the time of many faculty professional association, excuse me, professional association conferences. For example, professors Diana Roddinghouse, Lisa Para from Reading, both from Reading, and I attended the National Organization for Student Success Conference in Nashville. Also, in related conference news, Professor Brian Wright took this, didn't model UN team to a conference in New York City. Spring is also the hiring season in higher education. Many hiring committees for both administrative and faculty positions are finalizing their processes, so everyone is in place for the coming year. Although the new faculty group will not be as large as last year's very large group of about 35, it will still be a good percentage of the bargaining needed as we move forward and as we replace the faculty members who took FERB. We're also approaching the end of the semester. Before we meet again, it will be over. Graduation is coming up on us real quick as our final exams. In the last couple of weeks, faculty are working to make sure that they get all the content in. Students are beginning to review for their last unit exams, working on drafts of final papers, laboring over portfolios, and of course stressing over final exams. In addition to the normal end of semester scramble to finish in good standing, the added pressure of graduation and what comes next limbs overhead. This is a season of celebration, but it's also a time of anxiety. In the faculty ranks, this is a time of anxiety for some. This is the time of year for faculty evaluations. Probationary faculty find out if they've been asked to come back for another year. The probationary period for full-time faculty is three years. During the first year, they go through a mentorship year. In the second and third years, they have a year-and-a-half-long peer review process. This is in addition to the annual reviews by their dean. As it is in the classroom, so it is for performance reviews, evaluation should be an ongoing process with little to no surprises at the end of the process. Good communication between the faculty member and their dean is crucial. As we know, one surprise is one too many when it comes to somebody's career. As for non-probationary faculty, last year, a task force was charged with updating the full-time faculty evaluation process. A joint committee made up of faculty and administrators was put together to accomplish this task. We met for several months and came up with a plan that was acceptable to both sides on the task force. Unfortunately, we're still waiting for a technological solution to make the plan real so that we can present it to the faculty and board to vote on whether or not to adopt it. And my understanding is that Dr. McLeod has a team working on that actively as we speak, which we thank him for. We hope this project is not forgotten as we move into a new era with so many new cabinet members and a reorganization of the academic branch. Let us also not forget that the process, the proposed changes must be codified through negotiations and, as previously mentioned, a vote of the board and the faculty. Finally, some parting words. As you may have heard, I have decided not to run for reelection so that I can focus more time on my family. This is my final report to the board. So my final word is negotiations. Don't worry, I'm not going to try to negotiate from the pulpit here. I want to talk about negotiations as an enterprise. As I've said before, negotiation should not be thought of as a problematic process that must be trudged through. Negotiating is not taboo. Negotiations should rather be viewed as a time for two sides to come together to solve mutual problems. As we saw in the last round of negotiations, IBB can give us a process that does not necessarily result in winners and losers, but rather in solutions to mutual problems. But to take full advantage of the IBB framework, we need to view it as an ongoing process rather than a triennial event. Building trusting relationships within the IBB framework takes time. Negotiations is one of the processes we use to improve the college. It should be accepted as an integral part of building our community and moving the college forward to a brighter future for all involved. Thank you for your time and the collegial atmosphere that you've provided throughout my term in office. I'm sure that you will provide the same to my predecessor. Thank you, and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Professor Cooper. Any questions for Brett?
Just a parting comment, thank you. I know it's an enormous job, it requires a lot of time and a lot of not very glorious tasks, so thank you for doing that on behalf of your representative body.
Trustee Musel.
I just want to say thank you, Brett, for your time. I tried to challenge you like I challenged your predecessor, Dr. Leicher and others, about different things and finding those interests that we can align on. And I hope I've done it in a respectful way because I certainly meant it that way, and I really appreciate what you've done, and I hope you enjoy more time on your motorcycle.
Thank you. I hope to as well.
Anything else for Mr. Professor Cooper? Professor, I think I'll say, I think you've been here the entire time I've been here, since 2013?
Yes.
I've always appreciated you, you're certainly calmer than I am, and so that's how my wife and I work, I think. And I appreciate you being a cooler head always at a table. And I congratulate you on the term you did have, and I appreciate your input. With respect to the cabinet, I think almost everyone sitting here at the table, I've had some input on being here. I take quite a bit of pride and joy in saying, I'm not sure there's been a trustee that's been a greater ally to the Faculty Association than me, and I was a struggling nobody for attention and time when you all endorsed me and then the Kansas City Star picked me up in 2013, and everyone here is still dealing with me today because of your organization. So I appreciate that, and I hope that you'll trust that the time and input that I've had in this chair has been for the greater good of the college and that of the faculty, and then by direct deduction and conclusion for our students. I think that the faculty are a critical part of that success, but the strength and health of this board and the administration to support you and what you do, I think, is equally critical. And it was a job that I'd witnessed previous chairs, including two people at this table do, and, you know, they had often my dissent or criticism, but always my faith and loyalty to the process. So I thank you for your faith and loyalty to the process. And I would like to just echo your comment that negotiation should not really be something that's an aversion, but, you know, to remember that it's things like the 1862 Land Grant Act that helped launch a major university in this state, and then extension agents in every county to help teach the best possible agricultural practices that the Southern plantation holders had not wanted to be taught or shared. So it was that negotiation and that legislation that led to, you know, innovation that revolutionized the country and the world and brought us here today. So I think that you're absolutely right, and I thank you for your service. The next item on our agenda is the Johnson County Education Research Triangle, trustee Musel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I report every month on the sales tax revenues that the Johnson County Education Research Triangle sales tax, 1/8 cent, passed by the voters in 2008, brings in for the KU Clinic, Cancer Clinic, the KU Edwards Campus, and the K-State Olathe Campus. In March of 2023, revenues were 6.3 million, up 7.3% from 2022. That's a smaller increase than we've seen recently, but according to the chair of J-Cert, who's Mayor Peggy Dunn, that is, March is a normally lower year, which I don't know why, it's 31 days, but I'm sure it's because everybody spent all their money on Valentine's Day in February.
Spring break.
And our next meeting is this coming Monday, April 24th, 8:00 AM, at the best building on the KU Edwards Campus.
Thank you for, any questions from trustee Musel? Any questions for trustee Musel? Thank you as always, trustee Musel. The next item on our agenda is a report for the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, the immediate past president, trustee Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did meet this past Friday in Junction City at the Geary County Convention Center. All colleges were in attendance, and that's where we held the annual PTK Honors banquet. And I would like to share the names of four of our students who were honored. The first one is Ivan Alvarez-Pineda, who is studying information technology, Kristen Beckman, who is studying liberal arts, Allison Frye, dental hygiene, and Daisy Moore, liberal arts. Several students, including those four, were honored. Three students spoke about their positive community college experience, and one of those was our own Daisy Moore, who did an outstanding job of telling her story. And once again, I think we're just all reminded of the challenges that some of our students are faced with and overcome while they're here at Johnson County Community College, but the pride in what they do and the reflection of that as they're speaking is just phenomenal. Daisy is an incredible young woman, so they, all four, were great, but she is really amazing. I would also share that Kristen Beckman, who I just mentioned, is also the New Century Transfer Scholar, and that is the top transfer student in Kansas, and she will be attending...
University of Kansas. KU.
KU, yes, so you were very excited about that.
K-State had more students.
K-State did have more students. Heather Morgan, we did meet after that as a group for our quarterly meeting. Heather Morgan provided a group update on the legislative budget update, I guess is the best way to put that. And Mr. Carter provided a nice update earlier, so I'm not going to repeat that, but he clarified everything that she had said, including the Promise Act, which has been extremely important to this group, that that trailer bill is awaiting the governor's signature at this time. Heather then discussed the budget and how things currently stand for community colleges. We've already mentioned the re-centering this evening, that will be completed in fiscal year '24. The $3.8 million cut to capital outlay, which was suggested by the governor in her budget, was restored. was restored. I think those are the main highlights of that. Heather then discussed some headwinds facing higher education and community colleges in Kansas. It was also announced that April is Community College Month, which we are celebrating here at Johnson County Community College, and the next KACC meeting will be held on June 2nd and 3rd in Dodge City. So that concludes my report.
Any questions for Trustee Ingram? Which hotel were we at? Was it Embassy Suites?
What?
Geary County Convention Center?
I don't remember.
I forget. But the Geary County Convention.
It was last week.
They did a great job, and I'm glad that.
Yeah, it was very nice.
Heather Morgan has taken us out there. It's a fabulous venue for, for the event.
It is, it is. Nice central location.
Yeah, it's, it's overwhelming, the success of those students and their stories. So thank, Trustee Ingram had invited me, and I think Dr. Bound wanted me to go, so I went.
It was great.
Thank you for.
It was a good day of celebration.
Thank you for your leadership on that committee.
You're welcome.
With that organization, excuse me. The next item on our agenda is a foundation report by Trustee Ratan.
Good evening, everyone. Remember that some enchanted evening will take place on November the 11th of this year, and the co-chairs are Sharon and Jerry Cook. Our first committee meeting is April 18th, was April 18th. Sponsorships and tickets are available via jccc.edu/SEE2023. We have named the Johnson Countyan of the Year, and that is Dr. Roy A. Jensen. He was raised in Gardner in Johnson County. He's the Director of the University of Kansas Cancer Center, and he's been responsible for many cancer research accomplishments and advancements, and for helping the University of Kansas Cancer, Cancer Center achieve comprehensive National Cancer Institute designation, which is the highest designation that can be achieved for a cancer center. And I think I read down here, he's our 41st community leader that we have honored over the years. Scholarship updates. The Foundation's spring semester scholarships are being awarded, and 2023, 2024 JCCC scholarship applications are open. The Foundation hosted a scholarship celebration for our spring scholarship awardees. Most of the trustees were there in attendance, and more than 100 students attended, and several shared their stories about the impact of the scholarship support. It's always a great impactful luncheon. And new, we have a new event, Summer SIPS and Scholarships. It's a women's networking event that will take place on June 13th from 4:00 to 6:00 in the Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy. The goal is to bring women in our community together to learn more about our college, the foundation, and the impact of student scholarships. We have some honorary chairs. It's Jill, Katie, and Jennifer Gerlock of, and the collective Compass Realty Group is our event sponsor. Foundation Board of Directors' next meeting will be on April 26th. During our directors' meeting, a new slate of Foundation Executive Committee officers and directors will be elected. The Hall Family has awarded us, the Hall Family Foundation has awarded us a $25,000 grant to support K through 12 performing arts programming. This amount doubled from last year, and specifically, we will use the funds to support Title I schools to help ensure that tickets are free for those students. That is all that I have, and I'm assuming the, the bio for Dr. Jensen will be made public if it's not already published. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Ratan. Any questions for Trustee Ratan? I will say, I'm thrilled that Dr. Cook and Sharon Cook are leading that, that event. He, he was a friend and mentor, and I'm glad he's doing that. So thank you to Joy and Kate and everyone at the Foundation for having him do that.
Great selection.
Any other questions or comments for Trustee Ratan? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is a college council report by Jason Arnett.
Can we just apologize now?
On behalf of the Board of Trustees at Johnson County Community College, I apologize.
What did I do?
No, I'm sorry, it's so late. It's, it took so long to get to you.
It's quite all right, not a problem. My dog will have words with you later. Thank you for having me here. I apologize for my raspy voice and a persistent cough and getting over what my doctor called just a bad cold. But I want to remind you that college council is a group of 15 people from all the other shared governance structures across the college, so I won't bore you with the fact that you've already heard from Faculty Association. I'm sure Cabinet and Board of Trustees' updates are, are pretty familiar to you all. So in dining services, we try to be efficient and deliver quality, so that's my goal now, which has probably passed. Anyway, Staff Council will hold a town hall meeting on Tuesday, next Tuesday, the 25th at 2:30. It will be on Zoom, and I think it's going to be recorded. It'll be recorded as well. Details are on Infohub for those JCCC employees who want to tune in. And then in our, our meeting last week, there was also a robust discussion of the employee engagement survey, and our concerns have been shared around from there. To understand, the, the counseling office is in high gear again. My real question is, when are they not? The adjunct council has three adjunct instructors interested in serving on their council in the coming year and is looking for more members, as I understand it. The academic branch council has been discussing the employee engagement survey as well, along with upcoming nominations for their Chair and Vice Chair, as well as an in-person, all faculty meeting this fall. Then I want to touch on the Subcommittee on Communications. We've been meeting regularly and, make sure I get it. We're hoping that the data from the employee engagement survey will help, help us build on what is reported there. The, the goal of that work, and I know that there have been some concerns that have been shared with me, the goal of that work is not to supplant the employee engagement survey, it's to address some issues that were raised by college council with, about employees' feelings of mistrust and reportedly poor communication. Since that item came to us, we felt it's, it's important to fully explore the issue, to see what's actually there inside that issue, and if we can make a recommendation one way or the other based on what we find. So that's what our focus groups in the fall will be, will be used for, is to take the information from the engagement survey and build on it and try and get to the root of the problem, if, if there is a problem. We're not a decision-making body, but we feel it's important enough to see what we can see. College council will continue to meet through the summer. In, in our most recent meeting yesterday, which I wasn't at, I'm told that Rachel Haynes provided an overview of the engagement survey, and there was much discussion around topics such as the response rate, engage, overall engagement, employee group participation levels, and the importance of focus groups. That's my update.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Arnett?
I just appreciate this as part of our ongoing board report, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Bound.
Apologies to your dog.
My wife took care of it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for being here very much. The next section in our agenda is community reports and recommendations. Subpoint A is collegial steering. I'm listed as the report. Collegial steering did not meet this month. We will meet on May 10th, 2023, at 3:30 in the Lidl Room, and we look forward to, I guess it'll be, Dr. View will be there? Andrea View will be there?
Mostly. Sorry, I just remembered we're still open for nominations.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Employee Engagement Development Committee Report by Trustee Hamel.
Thank you. The Employee Engagement and Development Committee met on Wednesday, April 5th. Representatives from APC presented results from the employee engagement survey. The survey was open to all employees between February 9th and 24th. The total number of respondents was 924, which is a 38.6% completion rate. The JCCC results were benchmarked as 307 national surveys of employees at higher education institutes conducted during the same timeframe as the JCCs. Some of the highlights were 78% of respondents were very satisfied or satisfied with overall employment experience. Interdepartmental relationships were viewed as strong while inter, sorry, interdepartmental collaboration was viewed as positively. Shoot, I thought that was the other way, independent. Based on APC recommendations, leveraging the strong bonds within teams and departments with events and activities, facilitating more interdepartmental collaboration and communication, and conducting manager-supervisor training on how to consistently recognize employee contributions. Rachel Haynes has spent a lot of time disseminating the survey results on campus. They will also be hosting multiple focus groups to really dive into those numbers and see how to use those to the best of our ability. Colleen, Vice President of Human Resources, presented some policy changes for nine policies, and I'm going to go ahead and read the recommendations now. It is recommended, recommendation of the Employee Engagement Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the criminal background checks, new hire requirement policy, certification and/or licensing policy, probationary period policy, resignation policy, exit interview policy, copyright and patent policy, and employee use of college property policy, loss of personal property, and I'd like to do as shown subsequently on the board packet.
You're, you're making the motion, correct, Trustee Hamel?
Correct.
Yes, sir. Is there a second? The motion has been made by Trustee Hamel and seconded by Trustee Ingram. Any discussion? Any discussion? Trustee Reel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a quick question. It looks like most of this stuff is clean up to, to correct some language and make some modifications, but I had a question about the first recommendation, which is the criminal background check policy, and I just want to make sure I'm reading it correctly. If I recall correctly, I was involved in the formation of that policy back in 2011 or so, and the current language in that policy seems to say that whenever someone is moved to a new position, they must pass a background check. So does that mean anybody who's promoted, who gets a lateral transfer, has to, has to go through a background check, or is there some sort of discretion involved in terms of what that move actually entails?
Mark, you may not know, could we ask Kelsey that? Colleen, excuse me.
Colleen Chandler, Vice President of Human Resources. So our practice is to conduct background checks when individuals move from one position to the other, particularly when they did not get a background check at the point of their prior employment. Depending on how recently that was, we could consider the, the background check that is already on file, if they had one recently conducted in their initial employment with the college.
So there is some discretion in there?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Is that, what does that mean to you?
Well, I, the language of the way it's written, I was probably reading, putting too fine a point on it because it seems to me that if somebody gets hired and six months later they get moved to a different position, it wouldn't necessarily be, you know, necessary for us to do another background check. So that was really the basis for my question. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. In the opinion of the Chair, the motion passes unanimously. Trustee Hamel.
Thank you. Colleen also provided an update with the job architecture and compensation projects currently underway with Cole Pepper and Associates. We're currently in Phase 1 and 2. That's going to go basically through October, and then Phase 3 will be from October, November, concluding with December, which will be Phase 4, which will get the final report presented at that time. The next Employee Engagement Development Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 7th, in the boardroom. That concludes my report.
Trustee Ingram has a question.
Yes. Trustee Hamel, I'm not sure that you are the one to answer this, but I'm going to ask. In my notes, I had put something about communication taking place within the next couple of weeks about where we were with Cole Pepper to whomever, as we broaden our communication, do, has that? Thank you, Colleen. Can you confirm whether we have proceeded with some sort of communication out to everyone?
We are finalizing that communication. That should be going out either tomorrow or early next week.
Tomorrow or early next week. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. My notes were good then.
Good job.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
The next item on our agenda is a report for the Inclusion and Belonging Committee by Trustee Ratan.
Good evening again. The Inclusion and Belonging Committee met on Wednesday, April 5th, here in the boardroom. Our feature was a student, Alyssa Jimenez-Garcia, from the Student Sustainability Club. Participation in this club has brought about a strong sense of belonging for her and other students. She discussed the four pillars of sustainability, which were social, economic, environmental, and cultural. She also shared several projects that she, along with the club, have accomplished on campus, such as installation of water meters and solar campuses on campus, and also gave a shout out to her, the club sponsor, Jay. Benchmarking. Next, Natalie Allman-Bayers with the Office of Institutional Effectiveness, Planning and Research, presented benchmarking information. This month, we discussed female student enrollment demographics and outcomes. The data was compared with peer institutions from around the country. The Executive Director's search was updated by Kate Allen, Vice President of College Advancement and Government Affairs. She said the search has narrowed it down to four finalists, who will participate in on-campus interviews in late April. Special thanks to the search committee for their many hours of work to identify these finalists from a large group of applicants. We adjourned at 11:52, and our next committee meeting is scheduled for May 3rd, 2023, at 11 o'clock here in the boardroom.
Any questions for Trustee Ratan?
I'm, I'm interested in the format for those interviews. Could somebody speak to that, the, the on-campus interviews? Or the executive director position?
Kate Allen's coming to the podium. She's been chairing the committee.
Thank you, Kate.
Kate Allen, Vice President for Advancement. We have four candidates coming to campus at the end of the month. They'll have four-hour blocks on campus. They'll do a listening session. Sometimes we call them a candidate forum in the Hudson Auditorium. They will meet, it's not really a one-on-one, but it's with Dr. Bound, Dr. McLeod, and Dr. Corb. That will be a portion. They will meet with a small group of leaders from student success. They will do a golf cart tour of campus with students, and they will spend about 45 minutes with Cabinet. So that's how each one will block out.
And then do each, if I may, do each of those get to then, like, add feedback or rank them, or how does that work when you've got somebody visiting all those different?
Our IR team has put together a survey that'll have six questions that our search committee put together, and then that email will go out to campus to be able to score, you know, agree or strongly disagree on that scale, how they met the six criteria for the job description.
So each person that participates, each group that participates in some form of meeting the people would be eligible to vote, or is everybody eligible to vote regardless of whether they? I'm thinking if I don't really like DEI, but I get the chance to vote, I'm going to vote negative on everything, set type of situation. Is that?
That could happen. The point of the survey is, is really a data point for us. It's not a, a, a vote. It's if the committee's really feeling like candidate three is our best one, but that ranked very low on that survey, we might want to revisit our choice. But I, I think the survey will go out to those who've participated in the, in the day.
I'm John Clayton, the Executive Director for Institutional Effects. I oversee institutional research, and the purpose of the survey is not really a vote, but to get feedback from these individuals that goes into the process as a, as a data point in the decision-making process. So it's not, it's not really a vote. It's just the opportunity to provide feedback into the recommendation for the hire.
Okay. And then who is the ultimate deciding body? I forget. Who is the ultimate deciding body on picking?
I'm currently the IR manager.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
I'm always curious because one of the things. I'm always curious because one of the things that ACCT is very clear on and most board training sessions are very clear on is that you're our only employee. And so as board trustee members, we don't get involved in hiring decisions, and we don't get involved in reviewing candidates. And normally, we don't have this kind of a broad on-campus presence from candidates, I don't think, for other positions.
Actually, we have, for senior leadership positions within the college, we have gone to a much more public process to gain campus input.
I'm very interested in where we draw the line. And I'm not suggesting we try to do it here, but this is a very important position. And the entire feedback process is devoid of trustees. And I think in some ways, that's very appropriate. And in other ways, I worry that we should be somewhere in the process, even if it's a 5% part of the process. I just bring it up because I don't, I don't want to get involved in hiring on campus other than you, but everybody else in campuses can get involved, except trustees. And so I'm not, I just raise that as maybe something that the Employment Engagement Committee can speak to on different types of hiring.
And I can, I can appreciate the interest in being involved in that, but I think it also, it's a process that we're using to provide guidance to the hiring manager, in this case, Dr. McLeod, and, you know, seeking employee engage, employee feedback in the process about the candidates, and trying to keep that, that clear line between the role of the trustee and the role of the hiring manager in this case.
If I may. I deeply respect your opinion, and I hope you stick around. I do live to argue with you, nevertheless. We do, and I know you know this, and just for the benefit of the public, we certainly have input on a budget, right? We have an input with respect to strategic vision and planning, and we had lots of input about whether or not we were going to do this. So in many ways, I want to be involved in everything, and yet I have to, like, learn to trust my wife and just let her do things as a partner in life, you know? So I think Dr. Bound and his administration have done a wonderful job here. I think if, you know, if you're overwhelmingly successful, law practice is so busy and you need a break, I think that we would take a consultant. So I'm not trying to exclude you, I'm just saying.
I, I'm torn on this because I know what my role is and shouldn't and isn't, and that trustees ought to stay in their lane. And in something like this, I think one trustee, pick any of us, might have something to add that is broader and deeper than a student going to a one-time session, or an employee with a particular perspective going to one-time session and then filling out a survey on it. But I don't want to, we've, I didn't want to waste any time. We've got a lot of time tonight, but it strikes me that that's the kind of process we have for the president, which we should, because we have to engagement with employees and staff. So I probably.
I would think that we would have gotten invited, at least Laura or I, to a lunch or a coffee at some point when they're here, but if that's not the process.
Yeah, and I, and I'll step in and say that the process is designed along, among three particular prongs. The first being to recognize, as Trustee Musil points out, the appropriate distance for trustees who only have a single employee who influences the function of the institution. As Dr. Bound takes your lead about the availability of funding, of latitude to have the position, then the design of the position must reside with the constituency within the campus. It is both appropriate from.
With the professional staff.
Yes, for accreditation purposes, but also in the appropriate utilization of our shared governance principles that the campus has attempted to, to build upon in the last few years. That second prong really is allowing folks the latitude to weigh in, so to speak, but recognize that that weight is not based in a, oh, a preponderance of people liked X. It is really the idea that multiple eyes, ears, and minds are able to maybe catch nuance, hear or see things that maybe an individual hiring manager might not hear or see during the course of an interview. And so there is, so there is that, that ability for the campus to weigh in. And with, and with that question of, you know, an individual trustee, you know, or two, as interested individuals being invited, there is the question of the propriety of that role of the trustee, that we have to always err on the side of caution to maintain that distance. And with regard to the openness of this kind of process, I will go back, I will say, to 2016, when I spent nine hours on this campus, being grilled by faculty, staff, students, and everybody else, that it is not simply the hiring of a president that has always had this particular approach to it. Every large-scale, important executive position on this campus has had this since at least I was hired. I can't speak to before that.
But there was no trustee involvement when you were hired?
There was not.
That was my question, is there a precedent? If there's not a precedent established, it's probably not time to start one.
It's not only not a precedent, it's just not appropriate. It's not appropriate with respect to the Higher Learning Commission and other regulatory bodies by which we are accredited. And if there was trustee involvement, we would spoil thereby the selection of a position that many of us desperately feel we need. And so I'd beseech each of you, and I get consulted on this, Dr. Bound and the grace and dignity that he puts up with me, and I don't always agree with him. You know, I get consulted in, in terms of what trustees, what involvement we want and don't want, and you can blame me for any lack of trustee involvement, as I have made certain calls to make sure that the professional staff has the ability to do what they need to do. And further, I'd ask you to consider, if you want input, ask yourself why. And then if we pick a position or a person because of what trustee Rutan wants, or what trustee Hamel wants, or what trustee Cross wants, then that position is thereby tainted by the influence and lobbying by a political official for what should be, you know, a professional hire. So I'm just working to say that it's important that trustees not be involved in every step of the process or certain processes. I wanted to say that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Adam, trustee.
Just to go back and reframe a little bit, I don't believe, because I happen to agree with trustee Musil, and speaking from a trustee who recently overstepped the lines of what trustees should, should do, and I own that and will work my way through it, I don't believe that trustee Musil was saying, we need to be the hiring, we need to be part of the hiring process and have Dr. McLeod's ear and sit down with him and advise him on who. All we're, all that I heard you say, and I would echo, is we are also members of this community, as far as I've understood, and as far as our processes in the past have indicated. And so as members of the community, I would like to be included on a data point, which is, to your point, it's just data, it's just feedback from one or seven of us, whoever attends. It is not to be an influence, and it should be anonymous, frankly, in something like this where we have a direct hiring manager. But I think, in particular with this issue, which is very politically charged, the person who takes the seat at whatever, in whatever form, will have to come to this body and report to it. So it might be a critical perspective to have the people for whom that person has to come interact with to give a data point of perspective. And that's just my two cents. I just want to be really clear that I certainly would not advocate, and I didn't take your comments as advocating for influencing the hiring practice, and that is certainly a line we do not cross. But being included is, is different, and that's what I would argue for.
I understand and appreciate that, and I didn't mean to suggest that you did. I was merely making a counterpoint, a point, that it's, it's a thin line to walk, and there's a boatload of really good regulations and laws that we have to adhere to. Trustee Rayle has had her hand up.
Yeah, I just want to briefly comment, because we've probably beat this long enough, but mark this day on your calendar, I'm going to agree with you, Mr. Chair, completely.
We have not always.
As to what you said. It's, and the reality is that by virtue of our position as a trustee on the board, our voice is different, and we can't just be one of the crowd. If we, if we have a voice, that voice is perceived differently. But I will say this, I'm really looking forward to hearing from the successful candidate, whoever that ends up being, as soon as we can, about what their vision is and what they plan to do once they're onboard. I think that'll be very interesting and give us an opportunity to really delve into what that's going to look like.
Steve Rutan.
What I like to say is that I do trust whoever this committee is that is selecting this. We've put, like you said, a lot of thought, a lot of hand wrangling, wrangling into this position. It's probably been the most talked-about position ever. So I will put my trust and faith in the people who are going to select this position, that you will select someone who's right for this college, who's right for this culture, and look forward to working with that person.
I thank you for your comments. I think with that, that concludes your report. Is that right?
Yes, it does.
The next item on our agenda is the Management and Finance Committee, the report to be given by the man, the myth, and the legend, Trustee Musil.
We just wasted 20 minutes of our time. I, I.
No, you didn't.
Thought about that ahead of time, but.
It was a necessary and proper discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Management and Finance Committee met early 8:30 a.m. on April 5th. The board, the board packet contains information on pages 26 through 44. We received an update on the Information Tech Services and from our CIO, Rob Caffey, who's been here since, I think, October or November, I'm not sure if he's here or not, about department structure, budgets, cybersecurity challenges, all things IT, including a nice report on the student kind of internships, or students that are employed by our IS department, which is a great on-the-job training. We received a budget update from Janelle Vogler, kind of preliminary to our budget workshop tonight. I'd like to go through that for the next hour and a half, if I could. There's agreement on page 66 of our, of the packet, of one agreement that we approved. We have a number of, we have three policies and then some procurement bids that we need to address tonight. I'm going to do like Mr. Trustee Hamel did and take the three policy recommendations, make them in one motion, and now obviously anybody has any questions or wants to break them out for vote, we can do that. But it is a recommendation of the Management Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the modification of the reimbursement of travel expense policy 2.601, and to approve modification to the soliciting on campus policy 426.01, and to approve the modification to the weapons policy 660.00. All is shown in the board packet, and I would so move.
Second.
The motion has been made by trustee Musil and seconded by trustee Rutan. Any discussion?
I would say these are mostly cleanups. In one case, we're striking the policy because it is duplicative of where appears otherwise in our policies. And the weapons policy always draws a little attention, but the main thing there was we defined what size knife is covered by our weapons policy. So none of these, in my opinion, are substantive material changes to our policies.
We now add ballistic knives and throwing stars.
Yes, we had, I forgot, we had throwing stars.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, no. Hearing no opposition, it's the opinion of the Chair, passes unanimously. Trustee Musil.
Next item is our single-source purchase reports of amounts of $150,000 or more, which must be approved by the Board of Trustees. We have six of these, Mr. Chair. Would it be okay if I bring those all in one motion, and then you, we can have individual questions if there are?
I have no problem with that process.
The first one is a bid for CDW for a three-year renewal of the Splunk software for our Information Services Department. And it's a software renewal for $202,920.12. The second one is for Dell Computers for additional $450,000 for computer equipment needed in active learning classrooms, and for additional instructional technology in the amount of $450,000. The next one is a Johnson County Fire Protection Bid, recommendation to approve the single-source justification for Johnson Controls, fire protection for TrueSite workstations. And as indicated in your packet, those are for the Midwest Trust Center and for the police dispatch in the Midwest Trust Center, and one in building CSB for a total amount of We also have a bid for the Student Center Testing Services renovation, which is reconfiguration of that space, for the total amount of 200, the amount of $223,641.77, with an additional 10% contingency, for a total amount of $246,005.95. We also have a purchase request for rooftop solar photovoltaic design and installation for approval from Artisan Solar, for a total expenditure not to exceed $500,000 for installation and design of rooftop solar systems on the roofs of the Student Center and the library. And finally, recommendation to approve procurement of an online box office ticketing software from E-Tix, comma, LLC, for $53,164 in a base year, and a total of $282,253.60 in renewal options through 2028. I would so move.
Second.
The motion has been made by trustee Musil and seconded by trustee Ingram. Is there any discussion? I've been told trustee Hamel's hand is raised.
Yeah, thank you. Is it possible to move the solar panels off this and have a second, have a vote separate on that one?
Which one?
On the solar panels.
Absolutely. I would, well, I'm the motion maker. I would agree that we would remove the rooftop solar photovoltaic design installation from the motion and consider it separately.
Okay, very good. Then, Kelsey, do we, Ms. Nazar, do we then need a second? I want to make sure the procedure is correct.
I mean, you made the motion, I believe you were able to.
Well, I, I will restate my motion to exclude that, and I don't remember who seconded it, but they're, they're okay with it.
So, very good. I'm clear that you're taking.
23-076 would not be considered in this.
Very good. Everything else remaining is now up for discussion. Any discussion on the remaining items?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee.
Go ahead, sorry.
Trustee Smith Everett, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Clarification on the Student Center testing. Will this change our capacity at all?
No, as reported to the committee, it will allow us to do testing right now in a different way than we've done it before, but it will not affect our capacity, if I remember correctly.
A lot of it has to do with testing rooms for ADA students.
Ah, okay.
That's the biggest driver behind it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vogler. Trustee Rutan.
Regarding the box office ticketing software, a lot of companies go through, like, I'm missing the name now, but there's ticketing software out there that already exists.
Ticketmaster or others?
Yeah. Eventbrite, did we consider any of that versus spending $280,000 on specialized?
We have had a, we have had a box office ticketing service always for the Midwest Trust Center. It was expiring, and we went out to bid to look at alternatives. The existing incumbent was one of the bidders, I think the second bidder in there is, is that Audience View?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then, and they have some improved capability with E-Tickets LLC, but I don't think we can function just using Eventbrite or Ticketmaster. We still have to have our own box office ticketing system. And the 282 is a five-year, is a five-year.
The 282 is the five-year cost. Yeah.
The price is a little higher than we paid last year.
That was my next question.
So that if you look, Audience View was, was a lower in the bid process, and then Spectrix was lower than that. So it's one of those where it was the quality of the, of the presentation and the capabilities. I don't know if Janelle has more to add, or Kate back there, but it's.
There was some commentary at the committee meeting about enhanced functionality with this vendor, related to pricing structures, seating arrangements, marketing capabilities, and things like that, and that's why they selected E-Tix.
Okay.
If I may, I think one of the comments was said that we expect to hopefully see more revenue come in because of this as well.
Thank you.
Potentially.
Yeah, that, that, that was my thought, is like, when do you get a return on an investment for the software?
And I don't know that that's a calculation that was done in connection with this request for proposals.
Any other questions?
No.
Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call the vote for the, those certain items. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, no. Hearing none, it's the opinion of the Chair. Those motions pass unanimously. Trustee Muzel.
I would, I would move, so we can have the discussion and have Mark's questions or comments. For 23-076, the rooftop solar photovoltaic design and instruction installation for rooftop solar design and installation by Artisan Solar on the library and the Student Center roofs for a total amount not to exceed $500,000.
Second. The motion's been made by Trustee Muzel and seconded by Trustee Cross. Any discussion?
Mark Yesen.
Trustee Hamill.
Yes, thank you. This is something that I would, I would love to be able to vote for this, but the issue that happened last year with the same, when we looked at the same thing we were looking at last year, I'd asked for some financial information on our current solar panels and what we expected to see on this, and I was told that the trust and that I would get the data next, the following month. And then throughout the year, I'd know I'd made a couple of requests, and then I heard this was coming up again in February, and I had made multiple requests again to get financials on our current solar panels and what we expect these to get, the return on investment on these things. And it also was interested in the sourcing and disposal, and, and I got very little response on this. And again, I would love, if I can get that information, I would love to be able to vote for it, but at this point in time, I don't feel like I have adequate information to make an educated vote on it, so I'm going to have to vote no.
I might note, Mr. Chair, this was a different kind of bid. It wasn't, we want 23 solar panels, what will you sell them for? It was, you have up to $500,000. How much electricity can you generate for, with solar panels? And so it was a competition really among vendors to find out what is the best system that we could buy for $500,000 or less. And this one comes, came in at, I like, 496, but it will never spend more than 500,000. And at the next Management and Finance Committee meeting, we're having a report on our sustainability from Dr. Antle, and I know he will, he will report on ROI, on our sustainability efforts. And I'm sorry that the information didn't get to Mark in a way, in time or in a way that he's, he's comfortable with, but I'm, I'm very confident that this is something we need to continue and approve tonight.
Any other discussion? Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? I'm going to call the question. All those in favor please signify by saying yes.
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 And those no.
No.
The motion passes six to one.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee. The next item on our agenda is Student Success Report by Trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Student Success Committee met at 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday, April 5th, in the boardroom. The full board report is in the packet on pages 45 through 47. The committee heard three reports. Our first report was a grants update. Melinda Bryan Smith and Anthony Fanari reviewed the grants office mission, the grant lifecycle, the number of grants awarded, including the total dollar amount, and how the grant money is utilized at JCCC. Grants are used to fund scholarships, student support services, community research, professional development, program curricular development, and equipment and facilities. To date, for fiscal year '23, the department is managing 41 grants totaling $1.4 million. Bryan Smith emphasized that grant applications are deliberate and align with JCCC's mission and goals. Input from across campus is listed to determine need and application viability. The STEM faculty retreat furthers this goal by offering a forum for faculty to see current and past grants and the projects they are funding. Bryan Smith encouraged all to contact them with grant questions or project funding options. We did have a Panasonic update that was tabled until our May 3 meeting. Our second report was a Stellik academic planning tool. Alex Wells and Kathy Maheron provided an overview of the My, of the Plan My Classes tool, which helps JCCC's students build their academic plans and track their progress semester by semester during their academic journey. The tool will be used by students, staff, and faculty. However, it was emphasized that this is a planning tool, not a registration tool. The planning and implementation timeline and pilot program areas were reviewed. To date, 150 students have created academic plans using the planning tool. Communication engagement will be key in optimizing the campus-wide use of the software. Alex Wells provided a high-level demonstration of the Plan My Classes tool, highlighting its current functionality, and the plan phased in additional functionality and its features. Other agreements, Gurbeshan Singh presented a new agreement with the Shawnee Mission Medical Center, and that agreement was approved by the committee. The next Student Success Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 3, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. in the Hugh W. Spear Board Room. And that concludes my report, but I would ask Trustee Rail if she had anything she cared to add.
Thank you, Trustee Ingram. I, I don't, other than to say that the Plan My Class tool was a, a really wonderful demonstration, and, and provided it gets launched and optimized in terms of student use, it can be a real game changer for our students to really plan their path to success. And so it was really interesting to hear about that and, and to see that about to launch campus-wide.
Thank you.
Ma'am, Trustee, did you used to teach here? Was that you? Yeah, that was you. Thank you for your comments. Any other-
She's already agreed with you tonight.
Any other questions?
Don't push it.
Don't push your luck. Any other questions for Trustee Ingram?
Mr. Chairman, I will just say I had a series of questions that I did email to Dr. Corbin, so because of the length of this meeting, I will not go into that, but in general, we, Dr. Bowden and I spoke about, we were at a conference, and the other vendor that we did not pick for the software, we, Trustee Hamill and I happened to go into that session, for better or worse of this, the poor president here who has to put up with my questions because now I know what the other vendor was offering. So I will just say that as this rolls out, my biggest theme question was really, how is there a feedback loop so that as this developer is making sure that it fits at JCCC, both students trying to use it, as well as all of our personnel, have an ability to inform this developer what needs to work and not? And, you know, in moving forward, these kind of things, we hope will get some of our students to go see some of our people, but in some cases, they may be able to self-advice. I was always one of those students. I appreciate being able to do that, and so I hope that inside the system, there's a way for people to figure things out without needing to have a headache to, to get it to work the way they want, so.
And, and there will be. Students will be able to give feedback to counselors that they work with, faculty chairs, anybody who's working with them, they'll be able to give feedback there. But as we move through this pilot and we learn a little bit more about the questions that we have and how we would better be able to help our students, we're also looking at putting together some focus groups, probably in some of the program areas, where we would really be able to, once we figure out what, what some of our questions are too, to be able to really solicit feedback from them to, to make it better for them. And there also will be video tutorials and, there's a manual, you know, that goes along with it, but, but there will be small video clips and instructions for students because you're right, we, a lot of students who self-advice.
People-averse.
We, we wish, we wish everybody would get help, but yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Just wanted to make that public.
All right, thank you. And Vice President Corby, if I may, just please do what's necessary. Don't let it happen, what happened to Friends, where it became over-focused group.
Okay, we won't do that. Okay.
Any other questions for Trustee Ingram? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is, I'll be, the President's Recommendations for Actions. And the first report is the Treasurer's Report. Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Treasurer's Report can be found on pages 48 through 59 of your Board Packet. The Board Packet includes the report for the month ended February 28, 2023. Some items of note include, on page 48, the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Funds, which are the, in the primary operating funds of the college, an ad valorem tax distribution of 3.52 million was received in March and will be reflected in next month's report, 3.52 million, excuse me. The general fund unencumbered cash balance was 122 million as of February 28, 2023, a decrease of 7.9 million from the previous year. This budgeted decrease is due to that renovation of the Science and CLB buildings that we've discussed several times tonight, and which that is being funded by the general fund reserves. Expenditures are in the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits, and that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not sure that it does, I, I, we need to-
Oh, sorry, no, we need to take action, sure do. I'm trying to move us along as fast as possible.
That's all right, I understand.
And so I will, it is a recommendation of the College Administration that the Board of Trustees approve this Treasurer's Report for the month ended February 28, 2023, subject to audit, and I will make that motion.
Second.
The motion has been made by Trustee Smith Everett and seconded by Trustee Ingram. Any discussion here? Any discussion? I, I will say that I've sat on this board for almost 10 years and been a part of the community for 34, and I've been a part of multiple campaigns, and we're, as we near the filing deadline, where they see $122 million on hand, unencumbered cash. What does that mean exactly, unencumbered cash balance?
That means that that's the reserve, the reserve fund.
That's the money we need as a necessary and proper way for the ways and means of the college to be executed.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And that, that, that number will go down in any given month or cycle.
Correct.
And it's not like we have 122 million and we're just protecting it forever and aye.
Correct. And it's pretty healthy at the end of February because we, if you recall, we just had a large tax distribution in January, so.
I think somebody, every election cycle, talks about how much money we have on hand, and I just wanted, so what, what will it be, say, in Trustee Smith Everett's next report? Do we have any idea?
Well, we tried to project that out in the chart that's on the second to the last page.
Page 58.
Yes.
And so her next report will be March, month-end, for the Treasurer's Report purposes, that is, and so then that would be following the green dotted line down the trajectory from there.
So it'd be way below 80, like 75-ish?
Well, that's by, that's by May.
Oh, I'm sorry. Be under 100. Okay. But at, at any way, at any rate, it fluctuates, and that's the money we need for normal operations.
Correct.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, just for educational purposes, you pay your property taxes December 20th and May 10th, so they're distributed in probably February and June, and that, that's when we hit our peaks. But we, we plan on it at December 31, when it's at our lowest level, and that's what we set our reserve policy for. So anybody that looks at it at the peak and says, that's where you are and you've got too much, doesn't understand the expenditure cycle for the college. We, we expend things pretty well on a level amount every month, but we only get two ad valorem distributions a year, two large ones, and we get tuition in, in August, September, and January. So-
And funding-
A revenue flow does not match our expenses.
Correct.
Except at the end of the year, you, you look at the whole year.
I really tried to make it brief, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to call the question and ask, all those in favor signify, signify by saying yes.
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 And those opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is the President's Monthly Report to the Board, and now we'll turn it over now to Dr. Bowden.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'll jump right into my report, as soon as it comes up here. All right. We've already talked, we've already spent some time with Carson, and lots to celebrate, much of which I have, you've already heard about tonight with the folks, our honorees, small business owners, through the SBDC recognition this evening, but a couple student, three student groups to recognize for their exemplary work. Very quickly, the Golden Girls, our college dance team, competed earlier this month and placed second in hip-hop in the nation, and then they placed second in jazz in the nation as well, but also add to that, they were recognized for the most innovative choreography in the jazz competition. So I appreciate the good work that they do each and every year, again this year. The Model United Nations Team, which you heard referenced earlier today, also last month, you may recall, Persephone Roberts was here as the student, excuse me, student speaker. The Model UN Team under Coach Dr. Brian Wright, as was referenced earlier, competed, but what wasn't said is that they received the Outstanding Delegation Award for their portrayal of, of Belgium. And two of our participants, team members, Andrew Snow, was granted the opportunity to serve as Chair of the General Assembly, Third Committee, and Kayla Savanon, it was the Chair of the Commission for the Status of Women. Again, two leadership roles in the conference overall. And again, that team does amazing work. And then you heard from Carson earlier this evening, the coaching that, that he was able to provide, the College Leadership Challenge, Collegiate Leadership Challenge team that competed in a national competition as well. As he mentioned, they were first in the, in the nation last year, didn't achieve that this year, but I think it's noteworthy that our debate coach, Justin Stanley, sent an email to many people on campus recognizing the real deal that this team is. So when you think of the national caliber team that our debate team is, I appreciate the recommend, the recognition that he provided to his colleague. Cassie Jordan is the coach of that team, and they, again, they do fantastic work. Let's talk real quickly, if you will, about enrollment. From a continuing ed standpoint, enrollment continues to work its way upward for the spring semester for continuing ed and workforce development. They anticipate approaching the goal, but they may not hit the 5,400 for the spring semester. Again, where they, above where they were two years ago, last year was heavily influenced by federal COVID relief dollars. As you look at continuing ed and their start for the summer, they're above where they were the last two years, and certainly, you know, very early in the registration process for summer courses, but continuing in a positive direction there. If we talk about our credit enrollment, we are pretty much landing at 4.4% up, both in terms of headcount and in credit hours. And again, I applaud our faculty and staff for the great work that they've done to attract students and to retain students and to move students through greater and greater towards completion. So 4.4%. If we look at summer enrollment, which started the first week of April, we are just short of flat on headcount, but we're up 2.6% in credit hours. Remember, the difference between headcount and credit hours is that credit hours drives the budget, headcount drives the service need and classroom capacity and availability. So it's early in the process, but we're up and going, and fall enrollment begins next week, I believe, registration period, so. And then, keeping in mind that we had originally been scheduled for a retreat at the beginning of this month, in, in consulting the Chair, and I think we talked about it as well, I think the three of us talked about this, came to the conclusion that it would be best, rather than trying to find a retreat date, a separate retreat date that we could tag on to another one of these meetings, be the recommendation that we look at June 15th and do one hour on guided pathways in a retreat work session, kind of like we did with the budget tonight. And then at the June academic, excuse me, at the June Student Success Committee meeting, the academic program review portion of that would be discussed there.
Does that mean start at 4 on June 15?
Start at 4 on June 15, yes. We can send an update to calendar appointments.
Please.
Yep, we will do that, absolutely.
Us and them by our calendars.
The last couple of comments I want to make, first of all, to- The last couple of comments I want to make, first of all, tomorrow night is Eye Candy, which is the fashion design and culinary collaboration, but it's really the fashion design, fashion show that our students put on every year. I happen to have one ticket, so if any of you are interested in going to that, let me know. It'll be first one who wants it, gets it. But I have one ticket for the 6:00 PM show tomorrow evening. Students do amazing work. And then...
Pardon? Trustee Ingram? There you go.
Granddaddy's in a musical tomorrow night.
There we go. She can't be everywhere. Anyways, and then finally, tonight is the last board meeting, and Dr. Judy Corb will be with us. And I want to personally thank Dr. Corb for coming back and joining us during these last five months. It's flown by very quickly. She's been incredible. I know.
No way. It's been five months.
It has been five months. Yeah. She has been, she has been a huge resource and help to me and to our leadership team broadly across the college and certainly within the Student Success Branch. And Dr. Corb, I want to say thank you for coming back and helping us out again. I appreciate it greatly.
Thank you.
And as a citizen, this doesn't have to be her last board meeting.
It doesn't have to be.
Whenever she wants.
Dr. Corb, you are welcome any, anytime.
That concludes my report.
I would like to say more, but every time I talk, I embarrass Judy Corb, so I won't say anything, except to say thank you. I most certainly do appreciate your service. Any other discussion, questions for Dr. Bowden?
I would like to file an official request to have the Golden Girls come to a board meeting. I mean, and if they happen to do an impromptu performance, great. I'm just saying, they, we, they have been incredible. They just keep racking in the rewards, and I would love to be able to...
Let us, let us see what we can do.
Person.
Yep.
Not hearing a second. No real objection.
I can say my six, my six-year-old would concur. My six-year-old daughter's a big fan.
There you go.
Very good. The next item, any other discussion, questions for Dr. Bowden? The next item, thank you, Dr. Bowden. The next item on our agenda is new business. Does anyone have any new business to bring before the board?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Trustee, Smith-Everett.
Thank you. I was so jealous from everyone's board reports that I would like to provide my own in the form of new business from the Board Governance Committee. We have been doing some work behind the scenes to get aligned with revising our Presidential Performance Review, basically just reviewing the, changing the process a little bit. So I wanted to give the full board a little bit of an update, and then, Trustee Musel, please weigh in if I've forgotten anything. First of all, we are going to, we have...
Hold on a second. If I may interrupt you, Trustee Smith-Everett.
Do I have to do?
Mrs. Nizar, we, do we need a motion here to operate?
Yes, okay, thank you.
We need a motion, Trustee Smith-Everett, to, I believe you want a motion to amend or add on to the President's Performance Review process.
A new, yes. As a, yes, please.
A second.
No, a motion to add it to the agenda. To the agenda, right.
Excuse me. Sorry.
So I make the motion to add the Presidential Performance Review process to the agenda.
Second.
Motion has been made by Trustee Smith-Everett and seconded by Trustee Musel. Any discussion here? Hearing seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. And the motion passes unanimously. Trustee Smith-Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. So we have, we requested, Trustee Musel and I, to basically make the tool that we use for the President's Performance Review a little easier and a better flow to it. And so now it will be a little different format, but we have changed no content in it. It is just more of a, it aligns with the ACCT tool that we saw, and we thought that was more readable, and asked that that be revised, and so...
You saw in New York in the fall of...
Well, yeah, actually, several board members on this board have copies of it from various ACCT things where they've given it out. So I know it's not a secret, but we liked the format, and we already have our own tool, so we just changed our tool to be a little more of that format, which just makes it more usable in my, from my perspective. So what we are, what the Board Governance Committee was recommending, that we would like to, I don't think I need approval for, but I wanted to inform you all that what we would like to do is have two parts of the Presidential Review process starting this year. So the proposal would be that we have President Bowden report, give his self-assessment, which is his written documentation and presentation of the goals that he set forth last year and overall performance, that he would do that in executive session at the May meeting. Then we, as trustees, would have that week, or two weeks, I guess it is, to complete the President's Review. And then what we would like is then to have a executive session in the June meeting to then be able to finalize the President's Review. One of the things we felt was really missing is we, as trustees, don't really get time to discuss the goals that were set, how we, what the goals we think need the President needs for the next year, and have sort of a pre and post conference, if you will. And so this allows us to have some of that time and space to do that. And we didn't really, really didn't want to throw off President Bowden or the staff in terms of changing a whole bunch of dates. We just wanted to put in one extra time for us to meet. And then next year, if we see we need to do something different, we can do that. But for this year, simply having a pre and then post, if you will, and at that June 15, that is when we would do the consensus of trustees on the goals, discuss the final review, and then finalize that review for the President. And so moving forward in the following year, one of the things we have discussed and is up for discussion with this board is whether we should bring ACCT in to do an overall overhaul of our Performance Review process in general, in terms of the way we set goals, the way we, the process we use, the forms we use, and so forth. And and I would leave that up for discussion of members of this board.
Very good. I think I need to ask, is there a motion?
Yeah, that's, so that's where I'm not clear. I don't know that we need, we're not asking for anything.
I don't see this as a motion. I don't see this as a big change from what we've done in the past. Going forward, I think we want to formalize this more through the Board Governance Committee, and we can come back with a recommendation on ACCT for action. But this is, I think, the purpose of this was, you know, when we get, this time we'll hear from, we'll be able to talk to Dr. Bowden about his self-assessment.
Very good.
At the first meeting, then we'll do our own individual reviews, and then we'll talk about it again at the June meeting. And that really is a different, gives us more information than we've had in the past, but it's really not changing anything substantive at this point. But being aware of the schedule, I think it's important because, as Terry Suss would have told you, and Caitlin is well familiar with already, getting us to get back, get our evaluation forms back timely is a challenge. So
What?
We've got two weeks to do that, and Laura and I will be first.
Absolutely. We will race to first.
Just, just to be clear, and you've done this position twice, and I rarely say this, but I think I may have the authority to do it, the corporate authority to do it, to set the review. And I believe I did that last year, to set the...
It has always been a little bit loose, and the chair has always taken the lead, as Chair, as Chair Rail would say. But, so with the Board Governance Committee, we're just trying to put a little more structure to it.
I agree.
At least for this year.
Trustee Smith-Everett, I think to her credit, had brought this up this winter, and I had encouraged her to pursue it and to bring it forward. My preference, as I believe yours was, was just to govern as open and flat a hierarchy as possible, so that we all knew what, what would be in front of us, and we had input into what review Dr. Bowden is subject to. So I'm fine with this. I don't, I just, I thought we were going to make a motion. I don't think we need a motion. You, she's smarter than I am. She helped me pass contracts.
I'm agreeing with, I'm agreeing with you again, too.
We'll get a Lotto ticket at this...
Softballs. I'm just tossing out softballs. The next, does that conclude?
So that concludes my new business item.
Thank you, Trustee.
Can I just, very quickly add, I thank you for the opportunity to engage with you in this process. I am very supportive of this process and appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you for being up to it. That concludes new business. The next item on our agenda is old business. Is there any old business that we need to? Hearing seeing none, the next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda, which is before you, on the agenda and in the board packet. I always, I always get tripped up here. I should know it by now, but I believe we can just take the Consent Agenda in one motion.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Trustee Ingram and seconded by Trustee Smith-Everett. Any discussion on the Consent Agenda? I don't see Trustee Hamel, Jason, is there? But he doesn't have a question.
No question.
Thank you, sir. All right. All those in favor adopting the Consent Agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I believe now we have one executive session.
Correct.
And I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for consultation with legal counsel regarding a pending personnel matter, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. No action will be taken during this session, and the executive session will last for thirty minutes, beginning at, what time do we want to start?
Eight fifty-one.
No.
Seven fifty-one.
Markton, Markton need to get out and get back in.
Eight fifty-five.
Two, seven fifty-five.
Yeah.
Seven fifty-five, and will conclude at eight twenty-five, at which time, open session will resume at the same location for those present in person and at, by Zoom conference for the rest. Invited to join us in this executive session are all board members in attendance, Dr. Andrew Bowden, Dr. Mickey McLeod, Colleen Chandler, Kelsey Nizar, and John Doyle. May I have such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been made by Trustee Musel and seconded by Trustee Ingram. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We'll see you at seven fifty-five and back here at eight twenty-five. We're back in session here at eight twenty-five after being an executive session, which no action was taken. I would like to now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
The motion has been made by Trustee Rail and seconded by Trustee Ingram. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries four to one. Trustee Musel voted no.
I voted yes.